Mr. McFaul.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, this agenda preview will be for next week, October 30th. We will be starting once again at 9:30 in the morning with the capital improvement budget study session. Hopefully, next week, we'll be wrapping up the initial review of the projects. In the afternoon, at 2:30, the Glendale Housing Authority has three items that will consider all of these items are the consideration of affordable multifamily housing projects. One will be a resolution authorizing land acquisition loan, a land acquisition loan for a project located at 3673 San Fernando Road. Another will be an amendment to an affordable housing agreement for a project located at 328 Merrilloma. And the last will be a motion and resolution authorizing entering into an exclusive negotiating agreement with Heritage Housing Partners for a project located at 331 to 343 West Doran Street. On the redevelopment agency, there are no specific action items. The city council has two action items to be considered. These are actually more in the form of reports. The first will be from the Acting Director of Finance, will be the first quarter adjustments report to the adopted 2007-2008 budget. And the second, the City Treasurer, will be presenting the first quarter report. And that's all for next week. Thank you very much.
Mr. Yefi.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take this opportunity to put forward the name of Art Divine on the Civil Service Commission. Also, would like to have the BZA to be reopened, and we need some applications for Board of Zoning Adjustment. Thank you.
Mr. Quintero.
And I'd like to put Mr. Sam Manukian for the Civil Service Commission, and I'd like to reopen the Commission on the Status of Women.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Since we're doing that this time, maybe I better respond to the countless emails that I've been receiving since the paper indicated Friday that I'm going to be appointing Vartan Kaparchian to the Civil Service Commission tonight. Let me make it perfectly clear, I am not appointing anybody. The council decided one person nominates somebody for the council seat. I have 30 days in which to do that, and I have an additional 30 days after that if I need it. During that timeframe, I will nominate somebody, and it'll take the majority of this council to put anybody on to any design review board appointment that I have. Now, if anybody out there wishes to be on the design review board, has no conflicts of interest of any sort, and would like to go to the City Clerk's Office and fill out the forms with the resume, I'll be glad to consider them. Don't wait till the last minute, I'd like to get them all now and start reading them. So I hope everybody understands, no appointment tonight, none, and never will be because we can't do that, as you just heard. Names were put in nomination for the full council next week.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman.
Well, I'd also like to just second the comment that if there are people who, all of this, one thing all of this has done is it has caused a lot of interest in how you go about finding these applications. I just wanted to know if it wouldn't hurt to explain to the public where they go about getting these applications and so on.
Oh, City Clerk's Office.
And the City Clerk, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, the City Clerk can accept applications at any time, year-round. There is no specific window of time, say, two weeks before anyone wants to submit an application for any Board or Commission, they can do so at any time. I think, as Councilmember Weaver noted, certainly if we're looking at filling a vacancy, the sooner the better, but there is no time restriction.
Thank you. I also, on the subject of appointments, I would like to nominate Stephen L. Robfogle for the position on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And he is a member of a few boards and organizations that seems to be some interest lately. I will keep you in suspense and tell you what boards and commissions he sits on next week.
Mr. Kasakian.
I just wanted to also say that people can download the application from our website if they so choose.
And what's our website?
www.cigglendale.ca.us, or just Google Glendale, California.
See, there was another question.
Mr. Quintero. And for my nomination, I wanted to be prepared for the November 6 meeting, and we'll have a full council.
As well as mine. Mr. Kasakian. Why don't we bring them all before a full council?
Something else.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to the next item, 3B.
Mr. Mayor and Council, it is my pleasure to announce the next item as Senator Jack Scott, presenting the state of the state.
Senator Scott, welcome to Glendale. It's so nice to see you for us. You certainly bring a sense of decorum to this otherwise rowdy bunch, I'm sure.
Well, thank you for those comments. It is always a pleasure to come in front of this council. I've had many pleasant moments here, and I try to give you a picture of what's happening at the state level. And I won't go into great detail because you can read in the newspaper and so forth, but after I conclude my remarks, I always give you an opportunity to ask questions or give suggestions that you'd like for me to be involved in. I've had a really warm and great relationship with this city council and with the entire city of Glendale, and I feel myself extremely fortunate to represent this city. It is a great city, and in the years that I've represented you, I've noticed a vitality and a growth here that I'm just glad that certain other parts of California that are experiencing decline, that I don't have to represent them. I get to represent an area like this that's got so much growth and vitality. I was first elected to the State Assembly back in 1996, and then elected to the Senate in 2000, and I've been fortunate to be re-elected each time. And I thought I would begin first and tell you a little bit about some of the bills I've authored, and give you a picture of some of the big happenings at the state level, and then maybe mention a few things that are happening here in Glendale. I was reviewing my legislative career in the 11 years I've been in the Assembly and in the Senate. I've been fortunate enough to have 158 bills chaptered into law that dealt with a variety of subjects, mostly perhaps the greatest number have been in the field of education because I do chair the Senate Education Committee, and you would expect me, having spent over 30 years of my previous career in education, to move in that direction. But I've also done some work in the field of insurance and adoption and public safety and things of that nature. The governor just signed into law several of my bills. One was Senate Bill 52, a continuation of my work on the area of vocational education, something that I think unfortunately has been overlooked in our high schools. And two years ago, I authored a bill, Senate Bill 70, that gave $20 million to increasing vocational education in both our high schools and community colleges. And this year, this bill improves the credentialing process for vocational education teachers, narrowing and combining some of the areas so that individuals could teach several vocational courses and grouping them into 15 different categories where people get their credential. I did some work in nursing education to follow up on a bill that I had last year, Senate Bill 1309, that increased the number of nursing slots. Unfortunately, California happens to have the worst ratio of all the states in the Union in terms of the number of nurses to the population. And I do think that nurses are so essential to effective health care, and because of my past experience in community colleges, I've worked on that issue. I had a bill that had to do with making it more possible for paraprofessionals to go into teaching. It's a loan program, Senate Bill 193, that those who are teacher aides, if they desire to go into teaching, can get a loan, and if they then come to teaching over a period of five years, that loan is forgiven. I'm working on some other bills in education, one having to do with higher education accountability. We spend over $17 billion every year in higher education, and I believe that we can get even a better bang for the buck. So our three segments of education, I think they can work together more effectively. And this bill has cleared the Senate, and I've been working with a group of individuals who I think are experts in this field, and we'll have a hearing in late December and have that bill then continue in the Assembly next year. There are a lot of big issues in California. Perhaps the one that the governor talked the most about was health care reform. 6.2 million Californians are uninsured. We still haven't come up with a solution to this. If you talk to most Californians, they would tell you that they like the idea that every Californian ought to be insured. But when you get down to the actual details of it, and you think of all the players in health care, physicians and hospitals and health insurance and pharmaceutical industry and all the rest, then really coming up with a solution that everyone can buy into is very, very difficult. The governor said there would be a special session this interim period on that matter. We'll still have to wait till he calls us back to Sacramento, but all I can do is pledge to you that I'll generally favor anything that will help address the issue of the uninsured in California. Because when we end up having the emergency room as the primary method of treatment for some 6 million Californians, that's not a very effective health system. And so if we can move to try to cover all of Californians, I think we'd be moving in the right direction. There are the big issues in California. Water is certainly one that we're going to have to address. We recently, a federal judge said recently ruled that current pumping in the delta violates federal law by threatening endangered fish. Now, you might say, well, what does that have to do with us? It just could reduce water for Southern California residents by as much as 30%. So we better come up with a solution on that one as well. We do have still some money to be spent in the water bond, and I like the idea of Senator Perata, that we would have $2 billion of that to be spent in regional grants to improve water supply reliability. All of you read a little bit about our budget woes in the sense that we spent some 52 days beyond the time when we should have had a budget. What causes that budget delay in California? Well, perhaps we can say that there's too much partisanship, and I think that's true. But one of the problems that California has is that we are one of the few states, and there are only three, by the way, that require a two-thirds vote in order to get a budget out. Now, there are a lot of citizens that say, well, that's a good idea, but it keeps those spendthrift legislators from spending money. But the opposite side of that coin is, it means that one-third of either the Assembly or one-third of the Senate can hold up a budget, and that's exactly what happened this year. The budget got out of the Assembly only a few days late, and suddenly 14 Senate members said, well, we won't buy into this budget. And so we were gridlocked for over a month, and finally, we were able to knock that loose, and it didn't make a whole lot of difference. I mean, it didn't make a whole lot of change from the original budget, but it did endanger some nursing homes and some homes for the developmentally disabled and some other things that were very dependent upon the money getting out in order to have the budget. Well, what did the budget do in the long run? Well, the budget wasn't as generous as the budget the year before because frankly, the revenues weren't as good. We did do fairly well in the area of education. We were able to give K-12 education a COLA over 4%, which means that at least they could meet the rising cost of inflation. Higher education, the community colleges got the same COLA that the K-12 did, and the University of California and CSU each got a budgetary increase of some 3, 4% rather, and then a 2.5% growth factor. And unfortunately, another thing that did happen is that both at CSU and UC, the fees were raised. Some of that will go for financial aid for low-income students, but I'm becoming more and more concerned about the rising cost of a college education. All the studies indicate that a college education has a great deal to do with the economic vitality of the state. I recently read a statistic that said that someone with a college degree compared with someone with just a high school diploma earns approximately $1 million more in his or her lifetime. And so all of our high-tech industry and so many things, the entertainment industry and so many things that are typical of industry in California are dependent upon a well-educated personnel. And I'm very involved in trying to see that educational opportunities are increased. In fact, I have a bill that has now cleared the Senate, is over in the Assembly, that says that in the 7th grade, students will begin to receive information about a college education, both themselves and their parents, and we're trying to get those 7th graders to make a pledge that I'm going to college. Now, why I think that's important is that I think it might decrease the number of high school dropouts we have. Many, you'd be surprised, probably most of you, you know all about colleges, and you informed your children about college, but the reality is that in many homes, college is almost like a foreign country. They're not aware of college opportunities. And the sooner we can turn young people toward the idea of obtaining a college education, I think the better we would be. By college education, I'm not ruling out the fact that they may choose to get a certificate in a vocational field. I think that's certainly one fine way in which people earn money, and so we have individuals, whether they're going to become an electrician, or a nurse, or an auto mechanic, or any of these fields, these are good earning fields. But I think we need to point people toward increased education. One of the things that you're familiar with is that back in November of 2006, we had the largest bond measure in the history of California, and fortunately, the citizens of California said, we've got to move forward in this infrastructure. And so we passed that bond. That bond totaled $37 billion. When I say bond, it was several bonds. It included $19.9 billion for transportation projects, and I'm very hopeful that the city of Glendale will get some of that money. $10.416 billion for K-12 education in colleges and universities. $4 billion for flood protection, and $2.85 billion for affordable housing. Incidentally, there's to be a meeting of the stakeholders involved in the affordable housing over in Burbank, I mean, on October 30th for the infield incentive grad program. And there also, next year, there will be a small amount of funds from the bonds for housing-related parks. So if the council and staff wish information about the affordable housing schedule for funding, you can contact my office. I see that Mr. Starburg's taking some notes on that, so that's a good sign. I've given you a little bit of a breakout of some of the things that happened at the state level. I will say to you that certainly state politics is a fascinating enterprise. As you know, that's my second career. I had not been involved in elective office earlier in my life, and I decided later time in my life to enter politics, and it's been a great learning experience. People ask me whether I enjoy it or not, and I have to tell them that I do. Once in a while, I get disappointed, but nevertheless, I think overall, it's been a great experience. There's one item I call to your attention that I'm going to keep a very close eye on. There's a Senate Bill 980 sponsored by Senator Padilla, and I've been contacted by Glendale and Pasadena and Burbank because essentially, this bill would require the municipal utilities in every city to report annually to the Public Utilities Commission the state of their energy supply. Now, I think this was primarily designed because of some concerns about the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, and I don't think that it was fair to scoop up the other municipal utilities, which frankly, are performing very well. So I've told Senator Padilla that if he brings that issue up on the floor, that I will have to publicly oppose it. Fortunately, it didn't get brought up this year, but it is not dead, and so you have my assurance that I'll keep an eye on it. Another issue that's of concern to the cities is the issue of eminent domain. And I personally would hope that the constitutional amendment, and it didn't get out of the Assembly this year, that is less restrictive on that issue, that's sponsored by the League of California Cities, is the one that eventually carries the day. There's quite a few things that I could talk about as far as the activity here in Glendale of my office. I'm fortunate to have my superb field representative here tonight, Susie Jacobs. I know you've seen her, and she tells me a lot about what's going on in Glendale, and she works closely, for instance, with the Commission on the Status of Women. We supported your financial literacy agenda of that commission, co-sponsored Money Matters, a seminar on estate planning, and another one called Rosie Goes to Wall Street, a summer workshop for teenage women. We've written letters of support for projects that you're interested in, and every year, I have an event that I call Women in Business. I started that, and I've asked the Assembly members to join me in that, and this year, among our honorees were quite a number of Glendale women. I'll simply mention them. Margie Feldman, Jewish Big Brothers, Big Sisters Camp Max Strauss in Glendale; Demetria Graves, a family law attorney; Margarosian, a Glendale personal injury attorney; Juanita Watts, a doctor at Kaiser; Denise Miller at the Glendale Adventist Hospital; Robina Matavozian, the Persian television personality; Debbie Cookta, CEO of Trojan Ribbit Corporation. These were all women that we honored, that were women of Glendale. I will once again participate in the Montrose Christmas Parade. Always bring some of my children and grandchildren, and we get to ride in a fire truck, and so that's going to be an event that I always enjoy. So there are a lot of city of Glendale events that we participate in, the field representatives, and on occasions, I'm able to come and always enjoy my experience here. Well, that's kind of the overview. Tells you a little bit about maybe what was happening in Sacramento and some of the things that I engaged in, but as I promised to you, I wasn't going to take all of your time. I know you've got a busy schedule here, but I did want to present to you an overview, and then just stop and say, what questions do you have, or what comments that you'd like to make?
Mr. Weaver.
Hey, Jack, I've got a request for you.
All right.
Would you see if the legislature would give our law enforcement personnel more teeth to handle traffic speeding, running lights, whatever? I don't think we have enough teeth in the laws that we can prosecute efficiently the number of people. This is the main issue in this town, is people speeding, running lights, sticking their hands out, giving you the finger if you honk at them, waving a gun at you. There's too much of this. We all see it when we're driving on the streets. Law enforcement only do so much. I think we ought to go further, confiscating cars, suspending driver's license, whatever. If the penalty doesn't fit the crime, it'll continue. And living here 68 years, I've seen it progressively get worse in the last few years, progressively.
Okay.
So anything?
We did increase the fines for running stop signs to, I believe it was $258 or something like that.
That's not going to do anything.
We doubled that. Maybe we should do more. I had a bill that does give the right of confiscation on the second offense, DUI, a confiscation of the automobile, because of course, we had some people that continued to become intoxicated, and it didn't seem taking their license away was enough. So now, the police does have the right at the second offense to confiscate the automobile, and that may be, I thought would get their attention a little bit more than merely taking away their license. Somebody said that, well, it might be harmful to the wife when the husband is the one who got drunk, and one of the fellows who carried the bill for me over in the Assembly, he said, well, I'll tell you one thing. He said, in the home I grew up in, if my father had lost a license because he was drunk, he said he'd have a hard time to pay when he came home to my mother. But if you have specifics, and by the way, the law enforcement, I've had, I've carried bills on behalf of law enforcement, and I had a bill, for instance, that I introduced, that one of the best bills I think I ever carried, and it was signed into law in 1999, was that if someone carried a concealed weapon that was not registered in their name, they could be guilty of a felony. Before that, they could only be guilty of a misdemeanor. And three and a half years after that bill was passed, there have been 10,000 people charged with a felony as a result of that. Now, that at least got some people that were dangerous individuals off the street. But I hear what you're saying, Dave, and if Randy, for instance, wants to come to me and say, here's the kind of bill I think you ought to carry with more teeth in it, then I'll be glad to do it, because I'm like you. People that endanger the lives of individuals by driving in a reckless manner, I think they ought to be punished.
Well, you asked for a suggestion, and that's one that I hear continually. $250 fines aren't going to do it. Most of the ones I see doing this are driving luxury cars, and so money means nothing to them. I mean, I've had so many close calls and accidents. When I have a green light to watch cars coming to me, coming from the right or the left, making turns right in front of me on red lights without even hesitation, those people, they really should be taken off the road, their license, their cars. Now, if it means we have to request the chief to tell you something, I can give him a lot of ideas what I do with them.
Yeah. Well, what I'm saying is that, you know, I'm talking about, what I like is the actual formulated bill, what it should say and what the penalty ought to be, and I'm very open to listening to law enforcement if we can somehow in other strength in their hand, because I have a great appreciation for what law enforcement does and the difficulties under which they operate, and so I would be open to suggestions that might be helpful in terms of reducing hazards on our roads.
Well, then if...
I'm talking about the human hazards.
If my colleagues go along with me, I'll be asking the city manager to get something together.
Okay.
We can send to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yefi. Jack Scott, one of my favorite senators in the state legislature.
Thank you.
You've always been one of my favorites. You do work very hard for your constituents.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you for that. It's very apparent that you are very passionate about kids finishing high school, and education has always been your major passion. I don't know if you had an opportunity, you probably didn't because you're so busy, to see several programs on either 2020 or 60 Minute. These are programs about different high schools in inner cities and different parts of the country that a group of young men and women who were ready to basically bail out in a very terrible areas kind of stayed and became more mainstream, and most of the reason was because either one or two person took the initiative to start a music program. Interestingly enough, as some of these schools create a high school band, all these troublemaker kids, not only they join those bands, the statistic was staggering, I was surprised to hear, every single one, not just percentage, every single one of that band members, they all went to college. Every single one went to college. I guess maybe my wife was... I guess maybe my wife was telling me, because she's into musics, and she kept telling me if they're into music, their brain works different, the wiring changes, and they care more about school, and they actually will go to higher education. And as you know, probably as you taught school, music, athletics, drama, some of those things are considered to be luxury items unfortunately in our school districts, and they're the first ones that get chopped off. So if there's a way you could come up with some type of legislation, because a lot of their money through the schools is controlled by the state. State tells the schools how much you spend for teachers, how much you spend for this, this, and that. So that would be very helpful if we are able to put a little bit more money in this state toward music education. You see the examples of it during the Rose Parade. Look at all these little cities that have these huge 400, 500-member bands, and then it takes the whole Los Angeles School District to put together one band, and the size is not exactly as big. You've been to the parades, I've been to the parades, and we see that, we kind of scratch our heads, and we go, "Holy smoke, you know, what they have in the whole state is less than what we have in LA County." And nevertheless, the emphasis is different in here. So if there's a way you could see to it, to help some of the music classes throughout the state of California, I think you could probably help some of those kids stay in high school and finish and go to college, and maybe get into music major or something of that major.
Yeah. Well, that's a great point, Bob, and unfortunately, you're exactly right. Maybe even with the emphasis we've placed on score sometime, it's made us think of art and music and theater as auxiliaries, and they're not. And they have a lot to do with keeping young people in school, there's no question of that. I happen to chair the Joint Committee on the Arts with both the Assembly and the Senate. So I've taken real interest in this, and fortunately, last year in the governor's budget, there was $100 million for the arts, and by the arts, I mean music, theater, and art, you know, and that's still in the budget. So we did suddenly begin to say, "Okay, we've gotta spend more money on that," because, as you said, it was often quickly cut out. In fact, if you look around California, art and music and so forth are fairly important in our economy. You look at the world of entertainment here in Glendale and Burbank, when you look at Disney and DreamWorks and all of the, well, who is it that they employ? They employ people who have skills that have to do with art and music. And so I think you're absolutely right, and the studies, and I'm not a psychologist, I haven't studied the, you know, the human brain, but I have read some of the studies that indicate both music and art make a difference cognitively, that when people engage in those, that it sharpens their mind for things like math and science and English and so forth. So you're right, there's no question that sometimes activities, athletics, theater, art, music, sometimes those are the things that keep kids in school. When they're getting bored with math and English, but they maybe say, "Well, you know, I love that band, and I'll stick in school," or, "You know, I'm playing basketball, and I sure don't wanna flunk out as a result of that." So I think you're right, that goes for a certain roundedness. Now, as Californians, we have got to constantly recognize that schools do cost money, and we're still below the national average in terms of the amount of money we spend per kid. Now, I can tell you there are some ways in which our schools ought to improve, and I can give you a whole list of that, and I'm not gonna bore you tonight with giving you all my ideas about reform, but we've also got to realize that if we want good schools, we're gonna have to pay for them.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver.
Just one last thing, Jack. As you remember, you presented my daughter with her AA certificate.
I remember it well. She was a basketball player.
That's right, captain of the team.
Yeah.
At Pasadena City College. I don't know when I'll see you again, but she's four months pregnant, and
Terrific.
Last night, we just found out we're gonna have a granddaughter.
Okay.
We wanted a grandson, but we'll take the granddaughter named Kiana.
Yeah. I have 10 grandchildren, Dave, so I'm ahead of you.
Well, yeah, way ahead. It's gonna be nice to have that first one.
That's terrific. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jack, I just wanna thank you for taking the time to come here. Really appreciate it. You do have a wonderful staff, and I think you measure a political person or any person by the types of people that he employs, and you certainly have a great staff that does a good job for you and for all of the citizens you represent.
Well, thank you. I'll tell you one thing, I learned a long time ago in all the things I do, that I'm the public face, but the staff's the one that makes me look good, and I've just been, I'm very pleased with the work of Susie Jacobs and all my staff there. I have a great district staff, and I have a great staff up in Sacramento, and, you know, sometimes I see some politicians in Sacramento who don't treat their staff very well, and I'm a little always, I'm thinking, "What's wrong with you? Don't you realize that they're the ones that if you treat them right, they're gonna work for you, and if you don't treat them right, they're gonna kind of fold their arms?" So it makes a difference. Anyways, good to be here.
I have one...
Yeah, one other thing.
I have one other question.
Okay.
And I can understand if you do not wish to answer this question. It's a political in nature. As you know, there is going to be a new item that's gonna come to us, I think it's in February or something like that nature, that we have to vote on state legislature about term limits.
Yes.
What I'd like to know is, how would that particular legislation affect you? Would it allow you to run for another term, or it's not gonna allow you to do that? How does that affect you?
Well, I'll answer it very forthrightly. It would allow me to run for another term, and I haven't even decided whether I would do that or not. So I have to be very blunt with you in saying that if I were to reform California government, I've already mentioned I don't like the two-thirds requirement on the budget. I don't think that legislators ought to redistrict themselves. I'm for redistricting by commission, and I don't think term limits has been a great benefit to the California Legislature, because it has created too much of a turnover, and I entered politics rather late in life, and so term limits, in fact, I didn't get into politics as a result of term limits, I happened to beat an incumbent. So, and I always think that there's a, the term limit that really counts is the fact that the voters vote you out, and if they don't like what you're doing, then that's the term limits. As far as I'm concerned, that's the kind of way it ought to operate. Now, maybe we should have some campaign finance reform, but I'll tell you that I do not think that the present term limits is good for the legislature, particularly for the Assembly. This year, 35 of the 80 Assembly members were rookies. Now, some of them are great. Paul Krikorian, for instance, serves this district, and that's fine, but that's not the best way to run a railroad. We need more experience in the legislature. Most of us who are in the Senate served in the Assembly, so we're not in quite the same position, but I've been very forthright, and it doesn't have to do with me, that I think term limits is not a very good idea as far as having, you know, it's too arbitrary. I was president of Pasadena City College, and if when I took that job, if they'd have said to me, "Well, Jack, if you, when you serve six years, we're gonna fire you regardless of whether you did a good job or not," I might not have taken the job. I might have said, "Well, you know, you ought to fire me in two years if I'm not doing a good job, but I ought to be able to stay 15 years if I'm doing a good job." So you got my ideas on term limits, I told you.
Thank you.
I don't mind answering the question.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you very much.
Good to be here. Thank you.
And what is the next item?
Let's see, is a proclamation designating October 2007 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and November 2007 as End Domestic Violence Month.
Okay. Will Margot Botcher, Kathy Lefkowitz, Paula Devine, and possibly Michelle Flynn come forward?
Thank you, ladies, I have a proclamation to present you. Whereas October and November are National Breast Cancer Awareness and End Domestic Violence Months, and whereas domestic violence, DV for short, is a serious and violent social problem that exists in all economic segments of society, in all cultures, and in all countries of the world, and whereas an estimated 211,000, 240-plus new cases of female breast cancer were diagnosed, while an estimated 2,000-plus new cases of male breast cancer were diagnosed in 2005, and that mammography is recognized as the most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt, and whereas the Sir Optimist Workplace Campaign to End Domestic Violence and Breast Cancer Awareness are ongoing Sir Optimist efforts to promote awareness, advocacy, and action, and that Sir Optimists are in a position worldwide to educate everyone, especially women, that they have the right to feel safe and to live free from violence, and whereas Sir Optimists in Camino Real region launched a region-wide campaign called Color Me Pink for Breast Cancer and Purple for Domestic Violence to provide information about breast cancer and services available for prevention of domestic violence. Now, therefore, I, Arun Najarayan, Mayor of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the months of October 2007 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and November 2007 as End Domestic Violence Month, with special recognition to Sir Optimists of Camino Real region for their various contributions to the many communities for advancement of human rights and dissemination of information.
That's a lot on your plate, Sir Optimist, but we know you can do it.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor Najarayan, council members and staff, good evening. My name is Margot Botcher, and I am President of Sir Optimist International of Glendale, and with me, my sister Kathy Lefkowitz, and my new best friend Paula Devine. We are honored and very thankful to receive this joint proclamation on behalf of our region governor, our region board, and Sir Optimists all over the world. Tonight, the city of Glendale again becomes a part of history by joining other cities within the state of California on this region-wide Color Me Pink and Purple project. As you know, pink is associated with breast cancer and purple with domestic violence. In appreciation, we have brought pink breast cancer pins for you and purple safe cards, which I would like to hand out. Thank you for declaring the month of October Breast Cancer Awareness Month and the month of November the End of Domestic Violence Month. We hope this city will continue to be a part of this project, not just during the months of October and November, but throughout the whole year and for many more years to come. And I have a little pitch. Tomorrow night, we will be having our Wicked Wines on Wednesday at Glen Oaks Escrow. It is our first fundraiser, money to be gathered for breast cancer and our other programs that we support throughout the year. It starts at 5:30, and we'd love to see our council there. And now I will turn it over to Paula Devine.
Mayor Najarayan, city council staff, and public, I am here for two reasons. One, as a Sir Optimist, and one as a member of the Commission on the Status of Women. We are proud to partner in the film screening of Cargo Innocence Lost. One of our major sponsors is going to be the Los Angeles City Commission on the Status of Women, and also the Los Angeles County Commission on the Status of Women. We're going to be screening the film on October 25th, which is this Thursday, at 6:00 PM. This is a film by Michael Corey Davis. It is an exploration of the true cost of human trafficking. This is a $9 billion industry, and we will see in the film survivors, what they have gone through, how they have gotten caught up in human trafficking. I think in this day and age, especially of Domestic Violence Month, it is good for everyone to be aware that young women, young girls, and now young men are being taken off of the streets, and they disappear forever, and we have to be aware of this, and we have to know why it's happening, how it's happening, what is being done to stop it. And in this film, you will follow survivors' true stories on how they were involved in human trafficking. We invite everyone to come. We're going to have a panel discussion afterwards, which will include Michael Corey Davis, the filmmaker, and he's going to tell us the stories of hope. He's gonna tell us how the women that are involved in this have become empowered and have overcome everything that they went through in the years of their slavery. We're going to have a representative from the Coalition to Abolish Slavery and Trafficking Cast, have a representative from Immigration, Customs Enforcement, and the Los Angeles Police Department. We are providing dinner, food, and refreshments. It starts at 6 o'clock. It will be held at the police conference room across the street on Isabel, and we would be very proud to have some of the council or staff there, just to give credibility and importance to this event, because it is important for the community, for women, men, and young people to know what's going on and how they can prevent it. And maybe if we can save just one girl or one boy from going through this experience, we've done our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. What was the date on that again?
Thursday. Thursday, October 25th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. And the police community.
In the police conference room.
Conference room.
And the filmmaker will be there to answer questions, and he's going to tell us exactly what's happened to each one of the personalities in the film, and how they've improved their lives.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next, I'd like to go off the agenda and ask Ron Farina from the Red Cross to come forward.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, members of the senior management. Happy to be here tonight. I'm here to extend a warm invitation to our 16th Annual Fritz Coleman Comedy Night, and electronically, I have Fritz here tonight, and I'd like to see if we can bring him up for a personal invitation to all the citizens of Glendale.
Hello, it's your old friend Fritz Coleman from NBC4. It's time for me to invite you to our 16th Annual Fritz Coleman Comedy Night at the Glendale Center Theater, Sunday, November 4th, 7:30 PM, sponsored by the wonderful human beings at HSBC Glendale. Open seating tickets are $25, reserved seats and admission to a special reception, $45. Call the Glendale Red Cross or do it online, arcglendale.org. Some of the best comedians in the business helping the Glendale Red Cross, Sunday, November 4th, sponsored by HSBC Glendale. Don't wait.
No.
Hey, folks, this is Fritz Coleman from NBC4. Got a question for you. Are you Red Cross-ready? Did you...
Yeah. I'm gonna bring that another night, but certainly in light of current events, that's an appropriate segue. I did want to extend this invitation to each of you. I have a complimentary ticket for each of you, and so our city manager. And let you know that this event is really a fun event. If you haven't been there, you're probably one of the few people that may not have attended. Fritz lines up four, five, even six comics. It's done at the Glendale Center Theater, as he said in his public service announcement, and he lines them up to come to us. A lot of them are on the rise, they haven't been seen before, some of them are veterans, so you never know who you're gonna get till they walk in the room. He's brought some people that have ended up as the top winners of last comic standing, so it's a talented night, it's a fun night, and incidentally, it started as a result of the College Hills fires many, many years ago. He started this as a fundraiser that gravitated over to the Red Cross. He started this as a fundraiser that gravitated over to the Red Cross, so we're proud to have his involvement and his support, and we look forward to everyone's participation. It usually is a sellout event, so we hope you can make plans to attend. As Fritz said, go online, if you like, to arcglendale.org, and you can get tickets there at your convenience.
Sunday, the 4th. It's a very funny event. I'm usually not one who laughs too much, but it was, they really had me in stitches last year, so...
Especially when they picked on you.
Thank you.
You're sitting down there.
I forget. I'm used to getting picked on, though.
Well, so many keep a pretty low profile. I will tell you, there is no intermission, so there's no sort of sneaking out without getting nailed. So, once you're there, you're probably in your seats for a good hour and a half to two hours of nonstop laughter, but it is a fun event. It's a worthwhile event. Because Fritz arranges this and the Glendale Center Theater donates their facility, all the proceeds come to the Red Cross. And this year, because we don't have Milano's anymore for the time being, we're now at Damon, so we're even closer for the VIP reception, so that's another plus if you care to participate in that. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ron. And I would also like to go off the agenda and ask Fire Chief Biggs to come forward with some important fire information.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, I was asked by Mr. Starbuck to give you a report on the status of Glendale resources out on the fires, as well as the fire and the area resources and the fires themselves. So I'll run through some numbers for you. Glendale has three engines out on strike teams. We also have three chief officers out on the various fires. Two of the, we have, out of the Verdugo system, we have five strike teams out, a total of 23 engines. The last strike team is what's called an OES strike team, it's only three on it, but the rest of them are all five engines and a battalion chief out of the area. We have, three of those strike teams have just been moved from Malibu. They left at 5:20 on Sunday morning. They've just been moved from Malibu to San Diego Canyon in Orange County. One of the strike teams has still left at the Canyon Country Fire that's still burning up in the hills above Santa Clarita. The other strike team, the OES strike team's in San Diego, and our overhead staff is in San Diego also. There are, according to the report that I got at 5:00 this afternoon from the state OES, there are 16 major fires burning in Southern California. That's just LA, Orange, San Diego, and San Bernardino Counties, Riverside Counties. There are, there's a shortage of everything right now because of the number of fires going on. There's been over 330,000 people evacuated, most in San Diego, and I have never heard of that particular number before. There's evacuations of, there's evacuations of whole cities going on in San Diego County because of the spread of the fire. It's wind, it's predicted because of the death of all the chaperone. The winds comes up and the fires took off. It was an amazing, amazing weekend related to that. There have been 1,100 homes destroyed, about 1,000 in Orange, I'm sure, in San Diego County, and then about 100 to 150 in various other places, most, again, most in San Diego Counties. A status of the Glendale units, all of our stations, actually, all of the 40 stations in Verdugo are full. There's no empty stations right now. We are a little short on reserve apparatus, because that's what we do, is we send the apparatus immediately on request, like we did 5:20 on Sunday morning. We send those apparatus out and we backfill behind with recalled personnel to man the engines in the stations. Like I said, we're a little short on reserve right now, but we have all of our stations full.
So, Ms. Mayor, Don, if I can, if I do the math correctly, then, from Glendale directly, we have 15 people. Actually, yeah, we have 12 on the three engines, two on the water truck, and then a battalion chief.
And two other chief officers.
So we have 17 people from Glendale directly.
Correct.
And Verdugo would be, the Verdugo dispatch area, which is Area C, the 11 cities would have in the neighborhood of almost 100 people.
Correct.
On the fires. And then, of course, among the Area C cities, as the chief was pointing out to me earlier, we have to be very cautious in what we send away, because we all have to protect each other here locally. And of course, Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena, and many of our cities in Area C along the San Gabriel's have the same kind of hillside brush exposure that we're seeing fires being fought in, and we know how deadly that can be. So while we juggle, our interest in contributing resources as best we can, the chief and other chiefs in the area have to also be very sensitive to making sure we have resources here locally in case something should go wrong.
Our responsibility, our primary responsibility is to the city, and that's where we make sure we have complete coverage here before we send out. Our concerns also are neighboring areas. LA City has, most of their station's full. LA County has very few stations full, and they're short, for instance, in Locust Center, so we have a tremendous liability up there. We help them on calls going on right now, because of their responsibilities are countywide, and they have a lot of units spread all over the county. That's their primary responsibility, like our primary responsibility is here. So they're spread all over and very thin, so...
Mr. Weaver, sir.
Chief, there's areas of Glendale that haven't burned in my lifetime, hills. I can just imagine what they're like. Watching the air drops, water drops, all day today, and the effectiveness of them. Has the Verdugo region ever looked at purchasing a water drop chopper that could be shared between the cities? To spread the cost out, perhaps it is feasible. I mean, I don't know what other uses it could have, but, you know, just if something happened now, where are the water droppers? We don't have any.
We don't have any, we've never really had anything like that. I don't think even our helicopters have, our police helicopters have had buckets capable of...
Too small, so I just wondered, is it worth looking?
The costs have to be considered and shared, obviously. We do, the police department does have a shared agreement with Burbank on helicopters now. They're very, very expensive, and it'd be a limited use type of helicopter, so it's all on what the cities want. You're absolutely right. If there was a fire right now, we'd have to be recovering helicopters from other cities. We have agreements with LA City, we have agreements with LA County. They'll go to where, and they don't fly at night, unless there's structures threatened. What they do is they go to where there are structures threatened. If we had houses threatened or houses on fire, they'd be here when they could, assuming that their own liabilities, their own cities, like the, most of the fires in LA County have laid down pretty well. It's just the Arrowhead and San Diego, where they loaned resources to, they can get them back, but it's going to be a while before we get any kind of support. We've looked into it on a cursory basis. We haven't really, you know, put big numbers to it. It'll be many millions of dollars to buy it, and then three, or a half to, a quarter to half million dollars to maintain it every year, but that's, could be a shared cost. We've looked at it, we've talked about it, but we've never really looked into it.
I'd like to know what it would cost, because it was put out at the Bob Hope Airport there. Something came up and was spotted early enough, we could maybe knock it down.
And there are surplus helicopters available from the military, things like that. There, you know, there's a possibility. We'll look into it.
I think it's worth, because, so you lose 510 homes worth, three quarters of a million to a million, and then we say, well, we should have done it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Lots of worth.
That's absolutely right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hold on, Chief. Mr. Seifian.
Yes, sir.
Chief, in the news media, the number was in the neighborhood of 550,000 people being evacuated. Is that accurate?
It's, in the news media...
Is it within that ballpark?
Yeah, the original number this morning was 250,000, and I heard this afternoon 350,000, and I've heard since then 550. It's a huge number. Other than that, I don't know. I never, like I said, there's whole cities. The city of Ramona completely evacuated, the city of Santa Fe, Rancho Santa Fe, completely evacuated, that it's just unheard of in the scope of what it's, I don't know how many exactly. And when the report's all done on the fire, they'll put all that together. And there have been a lot of conjecture about what started various fires also. Really, we don't even look at that part of it too much until it's up and running, unless it's very obviously arson. They'll do reports on every fire and every, how every one of them started, and we'll have all that eventually, but we try not to speculate on start, but on numbers, it's big.
Mr. Starbuck.
Chief, you might relate for a minute just what we've done from a preventative standpoint in terms of additional eyes up in the brush interface while those incidents are going on.
We did, during the day, assign patrol, special assigned patrol trucks. We've also got a good relationship with, great ranger program here with the Parks Department. They're up in the hills, watching the hills. Our engines are on patrol in the hill areas to try and anticipate, because like Mr. Weaver says, if we don't get on it very, very fast, it's going to take off, there's so much dead.
And we've had our air units up on the days that we normally wouldn't have them up.
Yeah, it normally doesn't fly on the...
Because that's the best eyes we can have.
Yeah, and if you see it, where you get the water drop.
Mm-hmm.
And it goes without saying, Chief, that we should all keep a close eye on our communities for any suspicious-looking characters or any indications of smoke or fire, and we should call 911 if...
We sometimes have transients. There have been some huge fires started by people with campfires in the hills, and then they do it in the weirdest times. There's always the suspicious person up there. Again, we harp on this over and over again, but the importance of having a defensible space around your house is just critical. Mr. Weaver mentioned the number of years it's been since some of these hills have burned. There have been small patches of the north side of the Verdugos that have burned since I've been on the fire department, but never the whole slope. And there's other areas that just the whole slope hasn't burned, and they're real, real time bombs on that, so. Defensible space is a clearance around the house.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
It's council staff or council staff comments.
Mr. Quintero.
Okay, on a more positive note, I have a special guest I wanted to introduce. My cousin Marissa Horado, who's visiting from Clarksville, Georgia, where she actually works for a company called Ethicon, which is a Johnson &amp; Johnson subsidiary, and she works in the suture department, and she's a very hard worker who took her vacation time to come here to, unfortunately, at not a real good time of the year, to come to Southern California and visit us. And she also happens to be someone who knew Governor Schwarzenegger even before he became governor. She met him during the Special Olympics a long time ago and spent some time with him, and unfortunately, I guess he's too busy to get in touch with this visit, but maybe the next time she comes, I'm going to have Governor Schwarzenegger get together with my cousin, so. Thank you very much for being here, Marissa.
Mr. Weaver.
I got three things. I got thinking, I talked about my granddaughter. Someday, she might watch this tape, and I said we were hoping for a boy, and I just want my granddaughter Kiana to know that your mother and father and your grandfather and your grandmother are very happy to welcome you to the family, and we're just, we're all very excited about it. It's our first, and don't you ever think any different. Maybe we were thinking it'd be nice to have a big brother to take care of you, but unfortunately, you're going to be first, and you're going to have to take care of your younger brother. That's the one thing, so if she ever watches that. Another is update on litigation. I said I was going to keep the public informed. Memorandum we just got says, this memorandum is update, the city council on the total fees and cost to defend the downtown specific plan, final environmental impact report to date. The total invoices received as of October 18th, 2007, from Gasky, Dillon, and Blance, and from Cox, Castle, and Nicholson's for the downtown specific plan defense is $401,453.36. This does not include invoices for August and September from Cox, Castle, and Nicholson. Final judgment in the case was entered October 10th, 2007. Our memorandum of costs of suit totaling $27,773.36 has been prepared and will be served on opposing counsel shortly. Please note that the invoices today do not include legal work related to the preparation of the memorandum of costs. Total for attorney fees and cost to date is $429,226.72. Milano and Conquest student housing at all have 60 days from filing of the notice of entry of judgment to serve the city with a notice of appeal by December 9th, 2007. Gasky, Dillon, and Blance retainer was capped at $170,000. Cox, Castle, Nicholson was capped at $175,000. Correspondent staff is preparing a change order request to cover the additional costs of litigation beyond those caps and to authorize additional funding in the event petitioners file a notice of appeal. And today, we received a letter with approximately 80 pages attached to it and a box full of attachments. So I would guess by the time student housing and Mr. Milano are finished with the city, we'll be going well over $600,000 of your taxpayers' dollars to defend a very good downtown specific plan environmental document. And the third thing, I would like to agendize establishing a policy for debuting artists watching us on TV. One council member up here has told staff he does not want to be seen on TV close up, and since there was no policy governing that, then I would like to agendize establishing a policy regarding our faces on TV. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seifian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple items that I have. One of them is a request. I had asked this earlier on, but I have not received it yet, and this is, I think, Mr. Bassam is here and the city manager's here, so you may want to take notes, because very specific is what I'm asking for. I would like to get a matrix. In the matrix, I would like to have each one of the boilers, whether they are working or not, number them. Boiler 1, 2 through 9, there aren't too many of them. And the ones that are working, how often do we use them, and how much do they generate? How much electricity do they generate? You can tell me in megawatt hours, or you could tell me how many days they're working and what they generate in each hour. Also, which one of the boilers comply with the current AQMD rules, and how much fines have we paid to AQMD in the last two years, and which ones will be out of compliance in the next AQMD rule change, which is on the horizon? Also, provide a matrix of the generation cost, sorry, generation contracts. I can't even read my own handwriting, it's so bad. Generation contracts that show terms of the contract and the amount of megawatts we buy from other people. And I also would like to have an expiration date of those contracts. When do those contracts expire? And now, some we have an opportunity to renew, and some we don't. I'd like to know whether we have an opportunity or not. Also, show the amount of gas we have been using from Shoal Canyon, its cost, and the term of the contract, I mean, the years of the contract, not the actual meanings of what's in the contract, and the amount we have been paying in MMBTU and the total cost per year for the last three to five years. And that's what I need from the Department of Water and Power, and you can provide it in a matrix format. The other thing is, I was at church this Sunday, attending a memorial service, and believe it or not, even in Church Day, people come to you. And, Mr. Zern, this has to do with you. Apparently, there was some meetings that took place in a neighborhood, talked about having stop signs on the corner of Kennett and Valley View about a last year. about having stop signs on the corner of Kennett and Valley View about a last year. There was a study done and it was made clear that the stop signs cannot take place because they did not meet the certain requirement warrants. But nevertheless, the neighborhood was told that the city would paint some of the curbs on that intersection because Valley View comes up into Kennett. And Kennett is higher and Valley View is lower. There was some issue with visibility. The question was asked, it's been a year, when does that happen? So, maybe you guys need to get back to those people, tell them when they're going to paint those curbs and how much that needs to be curbed. The other one is, there was also an email that was sent, I think, to all of us, and it talks about the sidewalk on the corner of Chevy Chase and Sinclair. And the issue was that this sidewalk has been blocked for a long period of time and the public is unable to use that sidewalk. There is a new building being built on that corner, which I didn't know. Apparently, that building is not even, belongs to the hospital. It's a, it's a surgery center that is privately owned, apparently. The question the gentleman asked is, which I was wondering that, too. Generally, when you have projects that are right at the sidewalk, you build some kind of a canopy to allow people to go under it. It's, you know, made out of metal and they got wood planks on top, so nothing falls on top of them. None of those has been done. And he was asking why that didn't happen. Second question was, when would this project be completed? Because people haven't been able to use that sidewalk. And they do not like to cross the street in the middle of the block and then walk a little bit and cross the street again because that intersection is very, it's very congested. Last item, if some of you have heard, I heard this in the radio and also apparently it was an issue that was in LA Times, which I don't read, but I did hear it in the radio. This is something that will affect all of us. The City of Los Angeles just passed a resolution to put the issue of the UUT, Utility Users Tax for Cell Phones, on the ballot to be voted on. They are anticipating, according to what I hear, they're anticipating a negative, in their view, a negative ruling from the judge. We have the same issue. If my colleagues remember, we put $4 million aside. I would like to bring this to the attention of staff. It looks like the way the judge may rule is not only to stop collecting the UUT, but to also refund it from the time that the federal government eliminated the UUT. And if that happens to the City of Los Angeles, it's a huge number to a point that requires LA City to get rid of half of their Fire Department and also lay off over 4,000 employees. That is the number they gave out. I don't know what the cost will be to us, so I would like to know from staff what the cost is going to be. And we have a certain amount of timeline to put something on the ballot in the next county ballots. So, if we're going to do this, either deal with this to put it in front of the public and have them vote for it, or we're going to have to make a huge refund. So, those are my items. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments, Mr. Howard?
Mayor, members of council, on the issue involving the LA case involving the UUT, my staff has actually done analysis and we will be providing you with a report. In fact, the report may already be ready. I'll check the staff who returns tomorrow. We've been working on that. Suffice it to state, I think you'll find in the report that our issue is different than Los Angeles'. So, it may not be the same. That doesn't mean there still isn't exposure. It just means that our issue is a little bit different than Los Angeles', based upon the language of our code and the information that we have and our histor- and the history behind ours, which may be a critical enough distinction so that we don't have to, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be looking at something down the future because I think we always, it's always prudent to plan. But we have been looking at the issue and it is a critical and important issue. And we will be providing you with a report. And hopefully, as I indicated, I believe, I know the research has been completed. And the report may be a draft form.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else?
I forgot one thing and I think Starber wants something. By the way, a few weeks back when we talked about getting notices, I just wanted to bring the attention. GWP sent me a notice, which I got Saturday, about water increase rates. It went to Carol Roach. Nevertheless, GWP never misses my address when they send me the bills. And if I'm late 15 days, there comes the other notice, you better hurry up or we're shutting down your water. The other thing that I am surprised about is, I got this notice on Saturday in the mail. I got this memo which says draft on it this morning, which is basically this notice. The draft supposedly to give us a heads up on was written on October 11th, 2007. It was put on my desk this morning. And I read my stuff. So, I think maybe you may have to look into that. And also, my worry is, if this is continuing to happen, not just in planning, maybe staff needs to look at the database, the computer database. There may be a glitch in the computer system. Because I have never gotten anything from GWP that has that address. This is the first one in five years. So, I don't understand that.
Mr. Starber.
Mr. Mayor, in response, we are. You've given us the information and we're trying to find out why the county database we use is somehow out of sync with the actual tax rules. So, we're trying to pin that down. Number two, Mr. Yasefian, I had delivered just today from GWP a rather large packet that we've copied for all council members of information. I guess you'd requested from Ramon. So, you might look at that before we begin working on matrices. I don't know whether that's what you had requested or not, but...
I do not, I do not have it yet.
It was being copied today.
Oh, okay.
So, you'll have it in your packet this week. Take a look at it before we start to prepare more information and see if that meets your needs.
Sounds good. I will do that. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else? Mr. Drayman?
Yes. I want to comment about something that actually Mr. Weaver raised that I wanted to ask about. Has to do also with the camera work, the fancy camera work during our council meetings. Since it has now been apparently, or is going to be agendized, that we discuss that issue. In the meantime, I would like to know what the policy is.
I don't think we have.
Well, if that's the case, then it is what, then a free for all?
And shouldn't it then be the mayor's discretion as to how the meeting would be conducted in the absence of a policy to the contrary?
Mr. Mayor, not to get into a lengthy discussion about this, but I think agendizing it to discuss what the issues are. For example, all I know from what Mr., Councilmember Weaver said was that there was a question about close up and the need to have some policy potentially relating to that. I can only go back into my rusty memory when the cameras were first instituted and there was a dry run where, did a mock council meeting, came back and discussed camera angles and the like. But I don't recall any written policy involving the issue of close ups, the issue of how things are, how camera angles are placed and whether or not they're zoomed in or not and appropriate timing, et cetera. There has been some discussion about how the cameras focus on audience members and the like, but I don't believe we have any policy. Mr. Starber, correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. There's not a policy.
Well, then, then, since we don't have a policy, then apparently we do have policy, Mr. City Attorney, despite that fact. The memo that we received stated that a request was made from an individual council member stating that he wished not to have a close up when he was speaking. Instead, a fixed camera long shot and with no explanation as to why. And simply the explanation that therefore that was going to be honored. So, if, I would like to know whether that is, and I understand it's been agend- or it will be agendized to perhaps discuss and create a policy. But until there is one, what we're in essence saying is, there is no policy, or the policy is that whatever we request, we get. Because if that's the policy, then from now on when I speak, instead of the shot you're looking at now, I'd like to have a two-shot between me and Mr. Zern. And the two of us will appear on screen together.
Ooh, side by side.
I mean, if that's the policy...
No, when you're talking to him.
If that's the policy, then let's have that. Then I should be able to request that. In fact, we all understand that as council members and staff, we don't own the airtime as individuals. And we don't have rights to the airtime as individuals. If we did, there'd be a different arrangement here, but that's not how it is. And so, you know, I don't believe I can command the video policy of the city. Now, if you're telling me that one council member can do that, then I'll say, I will request from now on a two-shot. Me and Mr. Zern whenever he's here. And when he's not here, Mr. Agani and I.
Hopefully...
Only when I'm speaking.
I hopefully didn't express that viewpoint, that one council member can essentially create or command policy.
So, that's what we're doing right now.
Let me just say that every public forum I've ever watched or attended, whenever a speaker speaks, a camera usually zooms in on the speaker as they're doing right now. So, I don't know exactly why we would want to deviate from what is the norm and just ever since I've been a little kid and watched television.
Mr. Starber.
Mr. Mayor, we have not in the past had a, had a policy. We have in the past had a practice. And we only have two types of cameras. We have the ones that are variable that can be adjusted. And then we have what the, what the people at GTV6 will call the lipstick camera, the fixed camera at the middle. We do use both the wide angle as well as up close. That's what they refer to it as, the small...
That's a lipstick camera?
With that, we had a request. The request wasn't frankly for us to do extra unusual shots. It was to use the wide angle, which is there at those times. We did express at the time that it was unusual, that it would possibly cause confusion as we go back and forth from wide angle to up close. But that frankly, the purpose of notifying you of the request, and our response was it, was if the city council now wants to have a policy, you can request the matter replaced on the agenda. And that's what's happened.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I beg your pardon.
Mr. Drayman.
But we, in addition to that, now have a chyron that appears at the bottom of the screen when that individual council member is speaking. So, we've also added that. It's because I think that they understand downstairs that there's confusion. So, you know, I'm beginning to expand my request now. I think I want to bring a sock puppet and meet the diets here with a sock puppet. And we will film that instead of me speaking and you won't see my lips move. I mean, in effect, we're saying that we can just make up the policy and it's going to be honored.
Mr. Drayman, I think your point's taken. And I would like to, I would like to return to the previous practice. Until such time, the council changes or creates a new policy, which would be otherwise. If not, as Mr. Drayman said, it may lead to a request from each and every one of the councilmen for softer lighting, the halo effect over the mayor, or different things. So, let's sit down, let's not change it at this point, and agendize it and vet it out and deal with it like council are supposed to deal with certain issues.
Suggest we let GTV6 use its discretion and continue to broadcast the meetings and use the appropriate camera angles and we'll have it agendized so you can vet it out.
Yeah, let me suggest it not be left to the discretion of GTV6. Indeed, Mr. Mayor, it's your direction. Until it's reviewed and discussed and established by the city council, we will follow our, what has been our historical practice.
By the way, halo is a special effect. It costs more money.
Not for me. So, very good then. And let's, and obviously, let's get that sooner rather than later. I don't, hopefully, there won't be a detailed lengthy staff report on a date that we have all five.
Won't take long to prepare this one.
On a date we have all five councilmen. So, next week, I know is bad. Mr. Quintero's not here.
This is video streamed around the world.
November 6th.
This will be sometime in November, once we have a full council.
All right, thank you.
You've got some pretty heavy agendas and I anticipate this one will take some time.
And let's move on. I'm sorry, anything else, Mr. Drayman?
No, 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 no.
You want to get to the consent?
Next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, at five is consent items, including the minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I have no cards.
And Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weaver?
I'd like to move the consent calendar with one change on the minutes. At 3:00, be moment of silence to reflect on the victims of September 11th, 2007. That'll be changed to 2001.
You are absolutely right, Mr. Weaver. With that modification to the minutes, Rock, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yasefian?
Aye.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Mayor Nigeryn?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item six is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. A council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and a report.
Thank you. And this is the opportunity for the public to address the city council. You are entitled to receive up to five minutes of time with which to speak. However, if you will voluntarily limit your time to three minutes, I will extend the courtesy of placing your card at the front of the stack. We will continue with the three-minute cards and then to the five-minute cards until such time as 60 minutes elapses, not including council comment, staff response, or any discussion, which time we will suspend oral communications, return to the action items, and when those are completed, finish up if there are any speakers who have not been heard yet. The first speaker for three minutes is Dr. Richard Aspiritu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. My usual PowerPoint presentation for tonight, I canceled because of current events. Over 300,000 people and animals have been evacuated in San Diego County. Many of these people are senior citizens and disabled. Like to ask a couple of questions. What has our Fire Department done to evacuate our senior citizens, disabled, and homeless people? How are we going to provide transportation and communication with our people in this community who speak different languages? All of our relocation sites ADA accessible. I'd like to give you a couple of examples. Lady with depression and dementia with a cat. A young adult with multiple sclerosis and confined to a wheelchair, also having a cat. What provisions has our city done to provide for both these people with disabilities and their cats, or monkeys, or ducks? Repeat the question. Monkey or ducks? Would, I would like an answer to these questions sometime in the near future. And I would like the Fire Chief and the Police Department to give me a written answer as soon as possible. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Dr. Aspiritu, is there someone in the city that has monkeys as house pets?
They may not be house pets, but they can be service animals.
That's true. I won't ask about the ducks. Because those are more, I understand ducks. I mean, many people have ducks.
According to the Americans with disability, ducks and pigs can be service animals.
Ducks can?
And pigs.
Okay. Thank you for enlightening me.
But absolutely monkeys perform invaluable service.
Because it would make a difference. I mean, there's one thing to have a... I mean, there's one thing, they have a. Herbert Milano, three minutes.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. For a period going back four years, maybe longer, I have made dozens of presentations on the affair situation in Southern Glendale. An ever-increasing traffic congestion has created two cities. 100,000 residents who live with congested traffic, and 107,000 residents who live in relatively more comfortable areas. For the past four or five years, I have been pleading council to provide adequate facilities for parkland. Areas north of Glendale have 3.5 acres per thousand. Down here in Glendale, in the southern part, .02 acres per thousand people. Two and a half years ago, during the last previous council election, all four councilmen, then running in public said and in private, that it would expand Central Park. After the election, all four councilmen backpedaled on that promise. During a closed-door legal mediation between, required by the judge, between the city, my attorney, and I, I stated that I would not pursue legal action if the city councilman would simply pursue the stated objectives, to expand Central Park. In other words, if the city had just followed that one single request to which they promised, the cost to the city would have been zero, nothing. Instead, council approved the following costs to support this particular environmental impact report. The lead attorney, $460. The assistant attorney, $350 an hour. I'm talking by the hour. In assistance without a law degree, $250 an hour. Read the document. That's what you approved. So you're actually spending $1,000 an hour to defend the city on what isn't exactly an unfair environmental impact report to the city, to the residents, south of the 134 freeway. So I'm doing this for the purpose of bringing equity and justice to residents who are underrepresented. But last year, Councilman Weaver was pursuing a lifetime personal health insurance to which he was the only councilman qualified, before or after, that would cost the city over $1 million. So Councilman Weaver can come back to me and say, "If I'm pursuing something that is in general cost to the city, with all of these extra costs, about $4.50 per resident who is underrepresented, versus $1 million for one single person for his own personal benefit, figure out who really stands here to support the benefits and the future of the residents of Glendale." Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have to respond to that one.
Mr. Weaver.
My wife has lifetime health benefits for myself and her. I don't need it. I asked in general for anyone to have been. It's not debate, Mr. Milano. For anybody that had served X amount of times, was over 65, et cetera, et cetera. When the costs were produced, that ended it. I didn't need it. I have three different kinds of retirements with health plans, including lifetime. So trying to equate spending $600,000 of your taxpayers' dollars versus asking staff to give me a report on something that may or may not make sense, it's ludicrous.
Thank you. Leon Mayor, three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Leon Mayor. I'm here on behalf of the library and the friends at the library. And I want to invite everybody to come tomorrow night to hear John Dean talk about Broken Government. John Dean, this will be 7:00 PM at the Central Library. Please come early, so we can start promptly at 7:00. Also, if you intend to buy a book, buy it at the library. He'll be there to sell the book and to autograph the book, and it'll be an interesting evening. John Dean, most people know, has become one of the most respected commentators on the national scene concerning federal government. His book, Broken Government, is very interesting. It covers all aspects of the federal judiciary, executive, and administrative. So that'll be tomorrow night at 7:00. Now, we've had in Glendale for the last four or five weeks a program called One Book, One Glendale. And this is something we've done for the first time. And this is a program in which the city of Glendale, the library, has sponsored reading sessions throughout the city concerning the Japanese-American internment after World War II. And it's still going on. We have more events coming. We've had an author, Julia Soka, who's written a book called When the Emperor Was Divine. And she talks about, in novel form, what happened to Japanese-American families who, in the early part of 1942, following the bombing of Pearl Harbor, December 7, 1941, and the executive order from Franklin Eleanor Roosevelt because of the so-called panic on the West Coast concerning security. The Japanese-American, without much notice, were interned at various camps throughout the western United States. So we have these events that are still going on. And I have some material. It's also historical material. So anybody who raises their hand when I leave the podium, you'll have this as a memento of things that have happened some years ago but are of great importance. There were 1,000, approximately 1,000 people in the Glendale-Burbank area, Japanese-American. Most of them, American citizens, who had to leave their homes and with their, just their baggage, and report to the buses that took them to the internment camps. So raise your hand if you want some of these. And we'll welcome you at all these events. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Draymond.
Oh, he wants one.
Why don't I give them to everybody here?
There you go.
I have some. I'll give them to the clerk.
Bruce Philpott is next, for three minutes, followed by Anaheed Pinedjim.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, and council, staff, and the public. We are all conscious of the fact that firefighters from federal, state, and local governments are making sacrifices and risking their lives to battle these wildland fires in Southern California. While local firefighters comprising strike teams are deployed to fight these brush fires, Glendale Fire Department continues to maintain normal staffing levels to protect Glendale citizens. My topics of dealing with local policies on response times and staffing should not take away from the heroic efforts of firefighters working on strike teams. While the Glendale Fire Department is preoccupied with assisting other communities that are experiencing these firestorms, we've decided to defer our next presentation to the following week. Thank you.
And we're hoping that the fires are out by that time, Mr. Philpott. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mr. Najarian, members of the city council, and all the staff. My name is Anaheed Pinedjim. I am pleased to take part in this meeting to thanks each of you for listening to my issue that the city took into consideration in helping to solve this issue. I have a good news that just won the parking sign placed in the parking structure in Sunday, October 21st, 20, which was supposed to be two signs. According to the city, given notice to landlords to post at least two signs in the driveway area. One at the entrance, another towards the rear. It is good start. Thank you, City Attorney, Mr. Howard, for your effort and your staff. The bad news, just I want to tell you that the tenants in unit number B, the wife, the next day, I mean yesterday, very loudly and angrily voiced said, "I want to stab all your family." It means my family members. Just I would like to bring this, your attention, in order to know that this lady just makes trouble in neighborhood. Certainly, the other issues still remain unsolved, but I hope that would be solved another, like, issue the same way like this one. Also, yesterday, the Land Road sister with unknown man was walking on our stairs in rear side of the apartment building, showing him that we put our closets on the closing drying rack in our balcony and the table cover on our fence. I don't know why did she came and what the reason. Just thank you for listening to my question. Thank you so much for your help. I hope this issue will be continuous solved in the same way that this parking sign already sold.
So the parking is good now?
You know what? As long as the sign there, everybody has to follow the rule, I think. Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
And the only thing I can say is if anyone ever feels that they've received the serious threat of bodily injury or violence, to call the police department and report.
I know, but just keep saying this. I don't know if something happening or before happening something. This is kind of intimidating our, like, life, saying that I will stab all of your family. How she can say this kind of word? I know I have to call police in this issue. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the address. Thank you so much.
We're to the five-minute section. And the next speaker is Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, staff, audience out there. I have a request. I would like the camera shots of me to make me look 50 years younger and like Marilyn Monroe. You think that would be possible? Thank you. I have an announcement to make for the Patrons Club of Glendale. On November 2, we're having a luncheon and fashion show at the Castaways, silent auction, and $1,000 opportunity drawing, door prizes, and of course, a marvelous lunch, all for $35. And all the money that goes for scholarships at the college. We have raised, this is our 60th year, and we have raised a lot of money. And it's by a lot of ladies, many of them well up in years, who have, over the years, donated their time, volunteered to, you know, model such as Gertrude Ness, our 102-year-old member who will be modeling. God love her. She's a marvelous lady. Call 244-3993 for tickets. Thank you. Now, how many of you watched the DRB 2 last Thursday? How did you feel about Mr. James telling a young man living near a proposed 7,000-square-foot house on Allen that Mr. James found him objectionable coming to the DRB, and that he didn't have any right to be there? Since he was not adjacent or to the proposal. He was within a block of it. Yet, a man living on Western Avenue, who was in favor of the project, got no protest and even got extra time. I understood that the, for the DRB, that concerned citizens could come forward and speak to protect their quality of life. Is that not why the council appoints the DRBs? I believe this is a violation of the man's First Amendment when he was told he had no right to be there. The next, we have a group calling itself the GPOA, protecting citizens from homeowners associations. Now, people join homeowners associations voluntarily. The homeowners association do not present themselves as saving the city landmarks and do not save, such as the Brand Library, which is not even threatened. And this GPA is made up of at least four DRB members. Garpetian, Simonian, Sinfrini, and James. And Rodney Khan happens to be in that group. Now, is he not a city appointee to the Parks and Rec? And all have been appointed by city council. Is this not like the tail wagging the dog to be told by the DRB what the city council should do? And things like this? Going out, and when you answer, you call up their website. They ask for $25 toward their group. And amazingly enough, these are door hangers that were put up all over North Glendale. All my friends. This was brought to me today at a meeting that I was at from my patrons club, actually. And we were very busy wrapping all the gifts and so forth. We're volunteers, you know. So, you know, when is city council also? Another thing that came up, run by members of the DRB. I thought it was the other way around. And also, one is the city council meetings run by members of the audience, such as last week, when we had people in the audience yelling at the city council and telling them what to do and so forth. The mayor did say, if they didn't like what was the meeting that was going on and from the dais, that they should go outside. But through the whole meeting, there was discussion. And then, you know, don't believe everything in the city newspaper, in the newspaper that you hear. Supposedly, the lawsuit against me was dropped. I still have not heard that word. But then I've never really been served. And I have to tell you another thing. One of our members from the Adams Hill Homeowners Group, Eric Axine, was kicked out of the Adams Square Merchants Association. That association is funded by $15,000 of our tax money. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We were told to be the eyes and ears of the city. Mr. Weaver has said that. And yet, we end up being sued for being the eyes and ears of the city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Draymond and Mr. Weaver.
Don't go away, Ms. Hammond. May I see that for a moment, please?
Yes, if I can get it back. But every time I give art to something, I never get it back. Well, I supposed to give it to the city clerk.
How did you do that?
Well.
I'm gonna give this back to you, Margaret.
Okay.
They'll have to.
I thought that was very interesting.
They'll have to wrestle me to the ground.
I was dumbfounded and horrified.
I just wanted to make a comment related to what you were saying. I received this via email several times over. I would like my colleagues to see, at least see this or a copy of it, if I have your permission.
Sure.
This is from the GPOA. And I just want to point out, I don't think that's the Glendale Police Officers Association. But same initials. My concern about it is simply this. It tells you to go to a website to fill out the application if you want to save Brand Library. You go to the website, there's nothing there about Brand Library. It's an application to join the group.
Correct.
And the issues that they list there are not about Brand Library, but about council's actions with regard to DRB reform, with regard to other issues.
Exactly.
Yeah. So anyway, but I'll make sure you get that back.
And it's Glendale, protect, citizens of Glendale. Glendale, whatever. That's what it's about. Thank you.
Margaret. Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
My turn.
I'm sorry.
I called you, but no answer. You must have been out and about.
I was.
I'd like to talk with you because you've been able to get more names of that committee than I could myself. Since I'm the appointing person, I expected to know who's on there, even if it isn't a board office committee, whatever. And I was refused the information. So I'll be calling you. I'd like to see your list.
Thank you. I can tell you, my source was Jason Wells of the Glendale News Press. Thank you.
Well, then he got four that I couldn't get.
I thought you just said, don't believe anything you see in the news press.
I did, but no, I'm saying.
Wait, yeah, there's a qualifier there.
Thank you, the next.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd just like to point out, for the record, Ms. Margaret Hammond has relinquished her rights to that flyer for the time being until the council hasn't seen it.
You see, I thought you don't give anything.
The next speaker is Vace Mangasarian.
Good evening, I'm Vace Mangasarian. I'd like to close up because your behavior has changed tonight. It is sad when only 10 or 12% of Glendale's population participate in our local elections. Sadder when 10% of that amount gets involved in city politics or cares about what happens in our city. That's why we have a hard time to keep our elected officials such as you gentlemen accountable. Somehow, you have not grasped yet that you are not above the law. On our account, you indulge yourself many and many a times. Well, last week, I brought LA Weekly its article to your attention, MTA's $1 billion Development Sham. Mr. Najarian, instead of answering me with a simple explanation toward the LA Weekly, and the rest is history because it's been on this TV channel many a times. Two days, two days after that event, Mr. Najarian, you went to Mr. Zarian's show and you accused me that I've been planned here by certain colleague of yours. Let me assure you, in my 14 years of public service in this city, I have not taken a penny from anyone or I've been a puppet of anyone. I have, Mr. Scott was in my show many a times. Many of you have been guests in my program. I helped you, three of you to get elected, but I never took a dime from any of you or I've been a puppet or so forth and so on. I have two friends here, Mr. Quintero and Mr. Yusefian. And neither one of them had any clue that I was going to bring the LA Weekly here to this chamber. I didn't have any clue night before because I picked up the paper Sunday evening and by 4:30 or 5 o'clock, finally, I read the article accidentally. I want to assure you that what, what happened that day, it was just accountability. I wanted accountability and I brought the LA Weekly here. I think, Mr. Najarian, you owe me an apology. And, well, I shouldn't go further. I would rest it at that.
The next speaker.
Mr. Zinn, Zern, Mr. Starbuck, we got this report, I got this from Mr. Quintero and Mr. Yusefian. We read this report about our neighborhood, what goes on there, and I think we should have a meeting and because, Mr. Zinn, what you told us in the hallways, it doesn't match with this. I mean, this is not acceptable. We, it's the City Glendale interdepartmental, uh, comments. I mean, I would like you to read this and if you have time, we can get together and discuss this matter. Because it's been a year and a half that we're coming to this chamber and we're not, we're not getting any result. And what we want here is result. I have so many other things to do, but I don't want to rock the boat right now. I'll be back next week and we'll have fun. I'm Vace Mangasarian, have a good evening. And your apologies, sir.
I was gonna ask you for an apology, Mr. Mangasarian, for besmirching my reputation based on an unfounded report from a third-rate newspaper, and that was the effect that I wanted to get to you when I tore it into two or three pieces, that it has no credibility at all. And someone who has practiced journalism such as yourself should have a much better indication as to the reliability of sources. And I did give you a rather detailed and specific explanation, and for that, I will not apologize. I stand by every word and every action that I took the previous night. Thank you very much, sir.
What about going to Mr. Zarian's program and accusing me of being planned here?
Thank you very much.
What would you say to that?
I said, you were a supporter of one of the colleagues, and I didn't realize.
I've been supporter of, supporter of yours, supporter of Mr. Quintero and supporter of Mr. Yusefian. I don't know the other gentleman, but I would like in the future to be supporter of Mr. Draymond. I won't be the supporter of Mr. Weaver because next week, I'll be talking to Mr. Weaver. But you still owe me an apology.
Your time is up, Mr. Mangasarian. Mr. Draymond.
Well, I was going to say, you let me out when you said, listed your friends and I, I assume it's because we don't know each other, but maybe we can rectify that in the future.
He's gonna talk to me.
Next speaker, it says urban planning, but I believe it's Mike Mohill.
You're off the hook next week. They got their holiday.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman, Staff. Name is Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale, over 30 years. Like to talk about urban planning in the city of Glendale. I look at our forefathers on the bulletin board over here, the people with the funny looking hats and bow ties and beards and so forth. I look at the way they planned the city some 80 years ago, where there was sidewalks with parkways, green areas around the buildings, the public buildings especially, high rises that had green trees. And today, all I see is nothing but a concrete jungle. I brought with me some pictures.
Don't give them already if you want them back.
I brought, I took some pictures over the week.
You are besmirching my reputation, Mr. Mayor.
Impossible, Mr. City Clerk.
Of the different, of the different locations, just in the immediate area, okay? Especially, if you look at the first one, for example, it's our new Adventist Hospital.
This is a surgery.
Notice, there is no green belt around it. Sinclair Street, the parking area, is right on the street. And how are the people supposed to walk? Wouldn't it been nice to have a nice green area around the Adventist Hospital? To make, make a statement? Look at Brand Boulevard, no different. Every high rise has no green area. We have, right by a crocodile, a crocodile restaurant, you have this 50-story building with 25-foot setback, and that's all the greenery we have. We're in a concrete, what they call the concrete jungle. Do we want to continue living that way? Look at the new city, the police department, there's no green there at all. It's all concrete steps. Look at the utility building around the city, nothing but concrete, no green. The high rises, we keep building, but no greenery around them. Oh, we give a, a, a tall, a tall tree or two, but what happened to the setback? The ratio between the building and the street? Where is the green? You know, we build parks for a reason, because people want to escape. How many of you people on council at one time lived in an apartment? And then you couldn't wait to get into a house that had a green lawn and a tree? What makes you different than everybody else in the audience? The public has the right of a green belt. We have this thing called Indigenous Tree Ordinance. We made a big thing about it last year, and now we're fining people thousands of dollars for not dotting the Ts and crossing the Is, or dotting the Is and crossing the Ts. And yet, we don't have the time and the energy to go ahead and have an urban city that's a green city. We're supposed to be the green city with no setbacks, the parkways? I was, I was appalled to hear about this woman by the name of Ann Collard, who was fined recently because she was given a notice by the fire department and she trimmed the trees. Unfortunately, she didn't cross the T right. And now we're gonna fine her $340,000. Perhaps it's time what we find, we should fine the city of Glendale $1 million for not thinking about the residents, but only about the developers who build these big buildings. Again, let's look at that Adventist Hospital. It's, you know, Councilman Yusefian, Councilman Weaver, you drive down Chevy Chase every day and you see that building, don't you? And across the street, there's that retirement home with no setback. It's right on the sidewalk. You think people feel good about going into these buildings that have no green? City Hall, what we got, 25-foot patch of grass? Even the county gives us more greenery across the street where the, uh, the, what you call it?
Courthouse.
The courthouse is. And I love the, uh, the post office down the street, built 100 years ago, thereabouts. Doesn't that feel good, all that greenery around it? The federal government could do it in those days. And so here, our forefathers thought more about the people than our current people, than our current administration. And they're the old fuddy duddies.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Draymond.
Well, I just want to comment, you have a relative of one of those fellows up on the wall there, sitting in row 1, 2, 3, 4. And that fellow got sued for bringing to our attention and to city officials' attention an issue within his neighborhood that he was unhappy with. That is something that I think our, our, our city fathers past would, would not be happy about.
Well, you know, green makes everybody feel good, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Isn't that way we have, it's not we have grass around our house? You know, one of those pictures I showed you is Kenneth Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Wiseman.
Some of those photos can be in the contest. Longtime listener, first time speaker.
Actually, this is the second time I've been up here, but good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff and citizens of Glendale. My name is Bill Wiseman. I'm a resident of what we like to call Far North Glendale. And let me just start off by quoting Gloria Swanson in Sunset Boulevard, "I'm ready for my close-up now, Mr. DeMille." Now that I've got that out of the way. I'm actually here tonight to talk about tree trimming, a subject that I'm sure is near and dear to everyone's heart. And I, we actually have an appointment to get the trees trimmed at our house next week. And every time I mention this to one of my neighbors, they take a step back and they, they look around and they say, you better be careful, the city's gonna fine you hundreds of thousands of dollars if you do it wrong. And so I thought what I would like to do, maybe as a public service, is put together a little bit of advice based on the research I've done regarding tree trimming, so hopefully other people won't run into snags in this area. And I'll tell you in advance, this advice is worth exactly what you are paying for it, which is zero. And another caveat before I start, most of the, the issues that I'm gonna talk about are based on the Glendale News Press story last Friday regarding the Collards and their tree trimming issues. And to the extent that there may be inaccuracies in the news press, I mean, luckily, it wasn't in the LA Weekly, so we don't need to worry about that. But what I'm gonna say is based on what I read in the paper, so I'm assuming that to be true. Um, the first thing I wanted to say is it's actually fairly easy to get the facts on whether or not you have protected trees and because if you do, you must have a permit to trim them. If you go to the city's webpage, there's a link on the very front, the homepage for licenses and permits. And if you click on that link, you will be brought to another page that gives you a list of about 20 or 25 different licenses or permits. And there, right in the middle, is Indigenous Tree Trimming. And if you, so there's only two mouse clicks away from the homepage, it's not exactly hidden. And the permit information has all the information really that you need to know, whether or not your trees are protected. There are six protected trees, four kinds of oaks, one elm, one bay. There are pictures of all of the trees, pictures of the leaves, so to help in identifying them. Um, all of the information regarding, you know, the size of the trunk and how far up from the ground you have to measure, it's all in there. The same information you can find in narrative form on the Indigenous Tree Program page, which is a little bit harder to find. I had to do a, a search on indigenous trees on the website. But that explains it in more detail in a narrative fashion, and it also has links to the ordinance, including what the penalties are. So that's number one, you know, know the facts. Do you have protected trees? Number two, it's really helpful to know which trees are yours. If you don't know exactly where your property lines are, it probably behooves you to find out exactly where your property lines are, to make sure the trees you're trimming are your trees and not somebody else's or the city's. Both the City of Glendale and Los Angeles County websites have information that will help you to determine where your official lot line boundaries are. You might even consider a survey if you still have any doubts on what is or isn't your property. Uh, my third suggestion is to hire local firms to do the work. They are likelier to know the rules in Glendale as opposed to hiring someone from another area. My fourth suggestion is if, if at all possible, find a certified arborist who is also a licensed contractor to do the work, and that will help you in several areas. Number one, a trained arborist will not butcher your trees. And if that arborist is also a licensed contractor, you can go to the State of California Contractor's License website, you can look them up, make sure they are licensed, bonded, insured. You can see if there's been any disciplinary actions filed against them or any lawsuits filed against them. And if you have questions, you should bring that up with whoever you choose. I will tell you, it will cost you more money, but it's worth it, in my opinion, in terms of peace of mind. And the last thing I wanted to talk about is something that really kind of disturbed me from the news press article, and that was this quotation, "We asked them if we needed a permit and they said no." And that kind of bothers me a lot. And I'm certainly not a lawyer, I know we do have some lawyers up here who will correct me if I'm wrong. But it seems to me that that kind of thing can possibly be viewed as fraud. It's an intentionally, or possibly an intentionally false representation of a material fact to the detriment of another person. And it kind of strikes me as, as, oh, well, yeah, sure, we'll just tell you anything you want as long as you say, go ahead and do the job. So just wanted to mention the, those five things and the, uh, just to conclude, I would say that if, if indeed it is fraud for a vendor to, to claim they don't need a permit when they, when they either know or should know that they do, that is both a crime and it's a civil wrong, a tort in the state of California. And unfortunately, people who are on the hook to pay fines because of tree trimming and non-due diligence may have to end up suing the, the vendor who did it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman. That concludes oral communications. I, Mr. Yusefian.
Mayor, I, I think the gentleman may have accidentally misspoke. I think I heard him say four different kinds of oaks, an elm, and a bay. It's not, unless sycamore is elm, okay? So it's, it's, it's actually all the oaks and sycamore and bay, baylore, that's what.
He warned us, by the way, before he spoke. How much, there was a disclaimer as to the value of the advice. In all fairness. Okay, we are concluded with the oral communications. I want to jump back briefly and reopen item four, city council staff comments, and go to Mr. Draymond.
Yeah, I apologize.
You sure?
I should have. I would like to ask that we, uh, I would like a reconsideration of a, of the executive search issue with regard to the finance director for the city of Glendale only. And I had meant to raise that issue during council, council and staff comments, and I'm equipped to do that. So I would like to agendize that, please.
Okay. We'll do that at the next full council.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll leave item four and go to the next item where we left off, Mr. Kusak.
Item eight is action items, and at 8A is city manager regarding request from the Harley-Davidson Love Ride Foundation for cosponsorship of the 24th Annual Love Ride Fundraising Event. At 8A1 is motion to co-sponsor 24th Annual Harley-Davidson Love Ride. And at 8A2 is a resolution appropriating $13,875.
Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I'm going to move 8A1, but in addition to that, A, 8A1 and 8A2.
I'll second that.
But let me just say how happy I am that the Love Ride is gonna go to, I think, a next level. Rather than leaving the Harley-Davidson dealership and driving down San Fernando Road to the 5, it's my understanding that they're now going to go up Brand Boulevard. And both Mr. Starbuck and I have been in agreement for a number of years that that's the place to do it for the television coverage we're going to receive. Now, just in general, this event has raised over 20, make sure I get the numbers right. Yeah, it has raised over $20 million in the past 23 years that it's been, that it was started here by the local Harley-Davidson dealership. And in addition to raising money for muscular dystrophy and so forth, it also draws an estimated 20,000. 20,000 visitors when the event takes place on a Sunday. But what I also noticed is that prior to the event, on Friday night, Saturday night, including Sunday morning, all of the restaurants are packed, the hotels are packed, so I mean, it's bringing a tremendous amount of --
Stay out of the local restaurant.
Yeah, stay out of the local restaurant, a tremendous amount. And let's face it, folks, people that own Harley-Davidsons have money. It's not like the old days. These are very, very expensive machines. And so people that own them are doctors, lawyers, and others. But at any rate, it's just a tremendous asset to the city. The dealership itself provides an incredible amount of tax for us because of the sales tax.
Let me interrupt you for a second. Keep that thought. Mr. Shoku, would you please come forward as we're discussing your dealership and your event? I think it's fitting that you stand before us and be recognized.
So it provides a tremendous amount of sales tax, once again, because these Harley-Davidsons cost so much money. And anyway, I'm just very pleased that this is coming before us, and I'm really looking forward to the next year's Love Ride, which is right around the corner. And hopefully, Oliver will be able to give us a little more information about it. But this is really great for the City of Glendale. It's also tied to what's called California Bike Week, which means that I think it'll be an even bigger draw since this will be one of the events associated with that enterprise.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Oliver, the mayor and I were down there for the dedication Cerritos Park. Since you're starting there, I hope in some way it'll incorporate that nice park area. I don't know if you have that planned this year yet, but it's a natural being right there and open, a lot of open grass area to do things on. So just a suggestion, probably too late, but what the heck.
Thank you.
And I'll see you there.
Okay. Mr. Shoku, why don't you tell us a little bit about the event and let everyone know when, where, and all the money you've raised?
Well, the Love Ride's been going on for -- this will be the 24th Annual Love Ride. And I -- we've raised, as Councilman Quintero, $20 million so far in gross. That's not net. We have expenses. And we do appreciate the fact that the City of Glendale has been so gracious in trying to help us solve some of the expenses, including the item eight A two here by supporting us with some of the expenses that we're faced with. And all the rest is support. I'm really overwhelmed how much the city has been kind to the Love Ride and to our success. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And Jaylen will be there again to --
He's been -- he doesn't really grand marshal many events. Really proud that he does ours.
Every year.
And he's been with us since the inception of the ride, and we hope he'll always continue after his retirement.
There's a rumor the mayor's going to be riding up Brand Boulevard.
Is that a rumor or truth?
I'm dangerous on two wheels. Let's just leave it at that.
Mr. Shoku tells me they have really large training wheels for those Harleys, too. A three-wheeler might work.
He can ride -- that's what I was going to say, he can ride a trike. And let me also add that this is a family-owned business, that Oliver's family is involved in the management and operation of the building, which gives him ample opportunity to go around the world riding Harley-Davidsons. But anyway, it's a family-owned business, and I think it's just a great asset to the city.
Thank you. Very kind. Thank you very much. And why don't you stay up there while we call roll?
I'll get your wish, I think.
Council members, this is for eight A one and two. Councilmember Raymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Hey, you got it.
Congratulations and good luck. Thank you. Thank you very much.
See you in November.
All right. The next item, please.
At eight B is Director of Public Works regarding collection and manner of placing refuse, yard trimmings, and recyclable materials. At B one is ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yusefian.
All interest ordinance in one B one.
I have a card.
Eight B one, I mean.
I have a card, first from Evelyn Hansen.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I -- this is -- recycling is something that is really dear to my heart. I've said before that I consider myself an environmentalist. Even though I consider myself an environmentalist, I can't get my roommates to recycle because there's no ordinance requiring it. As one of my roommate says, "It's a choice, and I choose not to." So instead, I end up going through my trash cans, dumping them over on their side because I can't reach down to the bottom, and pulling all the garbage out and sorting it out if I haven't done it for a few days, and then cleaning up the mess I've made in my driveway. So I would really appreciate an ordinance on this. Los Angeles used to require it. Mayor Yordi, I believe, actually was elected on a platform of no, you won't ever have to separate your trash again. Let's go back to the good old days, when we actually cared about our environment and the world we leave our children. Also, I'd like to reiterate again, we could recycle water, too. Recycling is a good thing. And also, the fines for putting hazardous waste in the green barrels, like, could be really hefty. I've actually known people who have dumped paint thinner and stuff into the green barrel because all that dry matter absorbs it really well, which is like a really bad thing. It's dangerous for the trucks. Trash trucks have caught fire because of that sort of thing. And as an organic gardener who went to Lopez Landfill one time to look at compost, and it was really nasty stuff, but people put that in their yards. Thank you.
Did you set that person straight? Who dumped the paint thinner?
Yes, I told him exactly, one, that it was dangerous for the truck and that it could cost the driver his life if it exploded. And he didn't really seem, "Oh, well, that's not going to happen." And I told him that hopefully that material will go into a compost pile somewhere and it'll go out into someone's yard. Well, that's their problem, not mine. I'm not going to use the stuff.
Maybe you should introduce him to your roommate.
I almost introduced him to the violence I was raised with, but I did respect himself.
Well, thank you. This is anti-violence month, by the way.
And I, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank Evelyn Hansen for reminding us that Mayor Yordi ran on and was elected on a platform of garbage.
Okay. And thank you very much. This was an ordinance for introduction, and this was made by Mr. Yusefian. Next item, please.
At eight C is Interim Director of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Status of Glendale Water and Power's Electric Smart Metering Plan in Response to New Requirements of the 2005 Energy Policy Act. C one is motion to note and file report.
I have a card from Mr. Milano.
Honorable Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. Global warming has now been accepted as a major environmental concern from both political parties. And we have a special opportunity in Glendale to begin to do something about it. We now are expecting about 11,000 new residents in the next three years if the projects that are now currently on the pipeline are built. This is an exceptional opportunity to make sure that all of these buildings begin a process of installing advanced metering devices, metering devices that will cut down on electrical use in a significant way. I certainly support all the actions that the city's taking in moving in that direction and the efforts by the Glendale Water and Power. But I believe that if we have missed that opportunity to have these buildings begin the process of adapting some type of energy conservation methods, I think we're going to regret it in the long haul. These buildings should, at the very least, be LEED compliant, L-E-E-D, which stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. There's four certifications. Besides the basic certification, there's silver, gold, and platinum. And in many cities like in this one, generally bonuses are given for additional floor space and additional density if they meet one of these qualifications. Now, postponing smart metering to thousands of residents would be a huge environmental loss. I make the following recommendation, that if this particular study in adapting AMR technology is going to take too long, that we insist that all of these new properties that are coming onboard be LEED certified. It is the least that we can do, and the impact is both on energy and water conservation. So I believe that you have in the City of Glendale regulations that if a building is LEED certified, they can get additional, three or four additional stories as a bonus. I think that we should pursue any avenue that we can get to make sure that all of these new buildings at least begin the process of becoming energy compliant, either through adaptation of AMR technology or some type of metering device technology, albeit not the final one, or for them to become LEED compliant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Mr. Quintero.
Well, I just want to say that reading the report, I just hope that as soon as we possibly can, once we see a definite trend in what meters will be the standard, at least a standard here in California, I hope we move in that direction because it's in everyone's best interest, including the homeowner. So I hope we can move on this as soon as we possibly can.
So you're making the motion?
Here, I'll make a motion to note and file.
A second.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll, please. Councilmembers Raymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
At eight D is Director of Public Works regarding report regarding local efforts to develop and promote solid waste conversion technologies. At eight one, eight A, eight D one is resolution supporting development of solid waste conversion technologies.
And we heard the presentation two weeks ago by the L.A. County sanitation engineer, and we saw some very interesting methods of waste conversion. I don't think we need to go through it. This is a resolution supporting those efforts.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move?
Mr. Weaver.
Eight D one.
Second.
There's no other discussion? Mr. Yusefian.
I'd like to have Mr. Zern give me a little bit of an information on this conversion system. I guess what we are supporting is the L.A. County to create standards and also to create licensing. What are we supporting?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're supporting the county's efforts to explore, investigate, and analyze conversion technologies for potential application in the County of Los Angeles and specifically potentially in the City of Glendale. So the County of Los Angeles has a lot of work to do ahead of them. If you recall, one of the main issues that they're concerned about is going to Sacramento and getting legislation in place that allows the more, I would say, a freer, the freer ability to explore these technologies because of the impending landfill crisis that we're going to have. So we're simply partnering in that respect. As the individual, Mr. Sky, presented to the council, they're in what they call their Phase One project, and that is totally a county project. By supporting this, we would also be included for consideration in their Phase Two, which would be the expansion of any projects that they investigate and test in their Phase One, plus any new technologies that might be coming available. We're simply keeping pace. We're staying with them, we're staying involved with them, and supporting their efforts to at least look and explore alternative technologies for disposing of waste for the very long-term future, which we know we're all going to have some issues when it comes to where are the future disposal of waste.
Are there any impediments currently that exist in the state law and AQMD that will keep us from developing our own waste-to-energy plan?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, I'd say at this time, probably the most critical would be the air quality issues, either at the state level with the California Air Resources Board or locally with the South Coast Air Quality Management District. So you're having to look at emissions. Some of this technology, most of this technology, has not been tried in this area, so you'll have to go through a rigorous review. But I'm basing most of my response to you on traditional combustion technology, and that has been the biggest impediment to that. As you know, as you're well aware firsthand, these new technologies have considerably less emissions. But nevertheless, we'll have to go through the process of being vetted out by the air quality board. So in order to try to get some relief from that, the county, also the City of Los Angeles, Mr. Starbird mentioned two weeks ago that the City of Los Angeles has also approached us about potential partnering or support of their conversion technologies. And one of their key goals is to also get to Sacramento and get some relief from some of the legislation, that it would at least allow us to test it, to show that it is better technology, that it has better air quality standards in mind, and that it is something that's important for the future of the state.
Mr. Starbird.
Two things, supplementing Mr. Zern's comments. One is that this is only expressing support, as you did during the council meeting, it's not binding you to anything. Certainly, if they came back with a proposal for utilization of Shoal Canyon in some means, that would all have to be vetted out here locally and approved. Secondly, the other, and the other impediment that Mr. Sky mentioned was for some of these materials not getting credits under AB 939, when indeed you can convert them to usable resources or in some cases, energy, and yet not getting credit under AB 939 for not putting them in the landfill. And that was another area that might require additional legislation to sort out. If you're diverting it from a landfill that you're using and using it for energy, which could be a very productive source, you may not be getting credit for diversion.
So the question is, what do we care about that credit?
Well, if AB --
If we're converting all of our waste into energy, we're not putting anything into the landfill, so...
Right, there's, if I can, there's discussion always in Sacramento about increasing those limits for further diversion from landfills. There's been discussion about going beyond the 50% to 75 and 80 and 90.
And also potential penalties for residual that's left over.
That's right. So it could be any number of those things.
You're trying to say that the residual that you actually can also use in a different manner should all be used or should all be counted as converting waste into another useful source of energy or material, whether it's road base or something like that.
But isn't the legislature very specific to tell you what is it that you actually put into the landfill? If you're creating building material which we later on truck out of the place, is that considered to be, you know?
Well, I think, and Mr. Starbird hit the nail on the head, it has, there has been growing for years in Sacramento to tighten and tighten. You know, we have a very, very excellent alternative daily cover project with Shoal Canyon. That's the conversion, it's taking green waste, clean green waste, using it in place of dirt for daily cover that's required by law at the landfill. We have fought at least two battles where they've wanted to take that away from us.
I remember that.
And that's not conversion, when clearly it could be. There's been some other issues about conversion of certain types of inert materials into road base, and we've had to fight a little bit of a battle there. So it's just the thought that it does continue to kind of get ratcheted up in Sacramento with the thought that, oh, zero, zero, it will be, we can somehow get to a zero waste, which, you know, nice goal, but I don't know that we'll ever get there. But if we're converting it, using it for other uses, I think that's pretty admirable.
And Mr. Mayor, there's no one specific piece of legislation or issue, it's just wanting to be engaged along with L.A. County in monitoring these situations so we can be supportive of these technologies as they get refined and evaluated, and they start to focus it on one they think is most usable. And we want to, we want to have a seat at the table, frankly, and make sure Shoal Canyon is always considered.
Mr. Zern, who in public works is in charge of this initiative? I mean, are there specific engineers that are, that work on this project?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, we have an environmental management group that consists of what I will say are, these are scientists-type individuals who have come from the chemistry world and the biology world and the microbiology world. And they handle not only our landfill issues, they handle our NPDs wastewater issues, stormwater issues. So that's the group. And you've seen some of them, there's some of the folks that have come up with some of these innovative ways to deal with stormwater management. But we, as the world is today, a very, you know, regulated world, we have grown this operation from one person to about nine now in order to deal with the various landfill regulations, wastewater regulations, stormwater regulations.
Because as it pertains to this particular issue, it seems to me that in addition to, we have to, obviously, the county's a thousand-pound gorilla, but we're also a big entity. So I mean, I think our own engineers and other employees should get involved in sort of checking the technology out themselves and reading and just doing everything they can to see what we can...
I absolutely agree. And we have a very talented staff who has been pursuing that. I think what you saw is the county has a little bit of a head start on us.
Yeah.
So we're kind of, kind of taking advantage of that, not recreating the wheel right here. But I fully intend that we're going to be ready to go, just like we did with the storm water... But I fully intend that we're going to be ready to go, just like we did with the stormwater management. I think, I think it's something all five of you gentlemen should be proud of, that this city's taken a very independent lead in that, and that's from a group of folks who've gone in and learned the business, the laws, and stay very, very involved in everything that goes on, all the way to our legal department as well.
If I can, credit to Steve and this group. When the vast majority of cities are spending their time and energy fighting the Regional Water Quality Control Board on its standards, our take has been, we're going to watch it carefully, we're going to protect our interests, but our movement's going to be to try and find ways to comply, opposed to fighting.
Right. Thank you. And what did we, we had a motion, we had a second.
Yes.
And let me just say that, I'm not sure if Mr. Yusefian was here that meeting, but there was a PowerPoint.
I was here.
He was here.
I was the one who asked him about the gasification temperature, remember?
And I was the one that left when he did. Roll call, please.
I do. I know a lot more of that, but that's, that's for a different thing.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Njerion.
Yes.
Next item, please.
At 8E, a city attorney regarding a report regarding whether Fair Political Practices Commission regulations would require recusal of a council member who seeks to be appointed to be mayor or who seeks appointment to the airport authority. 8E1 motion directing staff.
Mr. Howard.
It's Mr. Mayor--
Anything to say?
Well, I'm assuming you want a report on this, and I'm prepared to provide it. Last month, both yourself and Councilmember Yusefian, not necessarily in that order, requested a report on the FPPC guidelines and government code provisions that might come into play in the appointment of the mayor, and also, then you specifically requested a review of all council appointments with particular focus on the airport authority. I have now researched the issues primarily focused on the appointment of the mayor and appointment of a member of the city council to the airport authority, and have provided you with my nine-page opinion as well as a summary in the staff report. I want to note that I've also looked at other council appointments to other commissions, state committees, state boards, state commissions, and with thanks to the efforts of John Tuktalian, who provided an outline of all the committees and commissions to which city council members are appointed, I've had the opportunity to review all of those, and with the exception of two that I'm still reviewing, the rest do not implicate FPPC guidelines or government code provisions under the Political Reform Act, which may create a financial conflict of interest. I'm still reviewing two to refine and make sure I have all the information to allow me to analyze it. In focusing the opinion on the mayoral appointment and the airport authority, I also, since it was not the subject of a previous opinion from our office, reviewed the penalties and provisions of the government code which relate to the administrative fines, civil penalties, and possible criminal prosecution for violations of what I call, again, the Political Reform Act, government code, and the FPPC guidelines. That has not been the subject of a previous opinion, and it was important to note those provisions. In doing my research, in performing the research and providing you with the opinion, it's important to note that the opinion is prospective only, just like the FPPC will not provide an opinion based upon allegations of past conduct, neither will my office provide an opinion based upon past conduct. This opinion is prospective only and to address the issue of appointment of city council members to the airport authority and also the appointment of the mayor. With that focus stated, I'd like to go over for a couple of moments what the conclusions were and why. First, let me start with the appointment of a member of council to the airport commission. That opinion was a little easier because previously in April of this year, our office issued an opinion that concluded it was a conflict of interest for a council member who expressed interest in appointment to the airport authority or who was nominated as a possible appointee for council to consider to the airport commission. Because of the payment of $200 per meeting, up to four meetings a month, it created a conflict of interest under what is called the personal financial effects rule outlined by Fair Political Practices Commission guidelines. That guideline states that if any decision will affect your personal, your meeting and elected officials or certain appointed officials, personal financial interests by a sum of $250 or more in any 12-month period gets to be considered a potential conflict of interest. And I'll talk about in a moment the specific section that I was focusing on in addressing that particular issue. With regard to the airport authority, not only did my office issue an opinion in April, but we had that opinion confirmed in an informal advice letter in August of this year as well. And that opinion from the Fair Political Practices Commission is in writing, it is at public record, it's available for any member of the public, and it in all respects confirmed the opinion, the written opinion from our office of April, noting that there would be a conflict of interest to appoint a member to the airport commission, and if this council might recall during a meeting to consider appointment of council members, certain council members were required to recuse themselves due to their expressed interest in appointment. That is consistent with the opinion from our office and the opinion from the Fair Political Practices Commission. The more difficult analysis was related to the appointment of the mayor. As all of you know, the mayor in the city of Glendale is an appointed position, it's not elected like the city of Los Angeles or certain other larger cities. That appointed position is rotated each year. There's nothing that precludes the current mayor from serving a consecutive term, but that generally is not the practice. As an appointed position, what we were, what we were looking at in our analysis is the determination of whether or not there would be an effect on the personal financial interests of the individual who was nominated for appointment to the position of mayor in April of each year. In essence, our research took us to the fact that there is, the council salaries are all set by charter, which by extension goes into state law, and it's all the same. However, there is one difference, and that is the fact that the mayor receives an auto allowance, automobile allowance, in a sum of $150 more per month than does the city council. I've noted in the opinion when that occurred and how that was adopted by the council. It was that issue then we began to focus in on whether that created the potential violation or I should say, a potential conflict with FPPC regulations and affected the personal financial interests of a council member. And the main focus of that was the change in Rule 18705.5 of Title II of the California Code of Regulations. That regulation provides that income from a state, local, or federal government agency, including reimbursement for expenses, is not income for purposes of assessing whether there's a conflict of interest. In other words, there's no economic interest unless the decision is made to appoint, hire, fire, or discharge or otherwise discipline a member of the elected, of the city council, in this case, their spouses or their dependent children. There was a rule change in July of 2005. Prior to July of 2005, that section did not have the phrase "to appoint." Prior to July, the Oakland City Attorney issued an opinion that an appointment to a border commission, where that border commission was actually compensated, did not, did not affect the personal financial interest because the phrase "to appoint" was not included in the guideline. In other words, unless you were hiring or firing or discharging someone, it was not an economic interest. The FPPC then, effective July 21, 2005, added the phrase "to appoint," which has created now, I would say, a groundswell of issues that are now just coming to the fore related to whether it's appointment to an airport commission, the appointment to mayor, or other potential appointments where there is a differential or a payment of compensation salary or other remuneration. And as a result, that's caused us to have to focus on this analysis of the appointment of the mayor with the differential in the automobile allowance. Taking it to the next step, we then began the eight-step process that the FPPC uses to determine whether or not there was a conflict of interest. The first number of steps were quite easy. Public official, you're making a decision, you're directly, because it affects personal financial interests, it's a directly involved decision. We ultimately carry down to the point of whether or not the automobile allowance, which is essentially reimbursement for expenses, was material, was it essentially, was it a material financial effect? The materiality standard under FPPC guidelines is not at all completely clear when it comes to personal financial effects. All it just says is if it's to appoint, hire, fire, or discharge, it's deemed material. We then began to explore and reviewed relevant FPPC opinions. The relevant FPPC opinion that we looked at was one that came out in late December of 2006. It's called the Humes Advice Letter. And in the Humes Advice Letter, what the court was, what the court, excuse me, what the FPPC was looking at was then Attorney General, then Attorney General-elect Jerry Brown wanted to appoint his wife, who's an attorney, to work for the Department of Justice. The question then came up as to whether or not that would be a conflict of interest under the 18705.5B provision that we are looking at here. And in that opinion, the FPPC was faced with whether or not providing a volunteer, she was going to be a volunteer, not paid a salary or compensation, she was going to be given workers' compensation insurance coverage and also reimbursement for expenses pursuant to a very well-defined policy the Justice Department had for reimbursing its employees. The FPPC was faced with analyzing whether or not those two forms of benefits, workers' compensation and reimbursement for expenses, were the type of things that the FPPC was meaning to or attempting to get to when it changed the rule in July of 2005. Ultimately, the FPPC concluded that it was not, that workers' compensation is kind of, is fixed, and so they didn't, they weren't detained long by that analysis. They did focus, however, on the issue of reimbursement for expenses and determined that where you have a defined policy for reimbursement of expenses, such as the Justice Department had, which many agencies do have, where you submit a receipt for actual expenses incurred, and then you're paid for those, paid based upon that, that the FPPC indicated that is not what we were really attempting to get to with the change in the rule, and as such, determined that under that factual scenario, it was not material and as such, it would not be a conflict of interest. We've analyzed that based upon the automobile allowance as outlined in both our expense reimbursement policy and the ordinance which adopted it, as well as looking at some commissioner of internal revenue decisions in DICTA at least that point out that, and for all practice, for both, essentially for all purposes, both our ordinance and the expense reimbursement policy, the language is laid out that automobile allowance is essentially a reimbursement for expenses. It points out that it's an anticipation of the expenses incurred by whether it's the mayor or the council members, and as a result, in anticipation of those expenses, you would be paid a flat automobile allowance, and that is the only reimbursement for expenses for automobiles usage that you would receive, with one exception, and that's use of the automobile beyond a 75-mile radius from City Hall. Likewise, the Internal Revenue, Commissioner of Internal Revenue Decision, which noted also that automobile allowances are also a form of reimbursement of expenses. If we could stop there, we would probably come to the conclusion that it's not a conflict of interest. However, we treat the automobile allowance as a form of compensation. It is taxable, it appears on your W-2 at the end of the year, it is a flat payment, and it, as a result, we determine that that flat payment is distinguishable from the FPPC's analysis under the Inray Humes opinion. We confirm this after I completed my research and drafted the opinion, contacted the FPPC and spoke to their staff council, not once but twice. And ultimately, in the final conclusion, their assessment is, again, this is telephonically, that the, because it is a flat rate payment, it does create a potential conflict of interest, and as such, in the future, for example, coming up this April, if there's going to be an appointment of the mayor, that because of the differential in the auto allowance and the manner in which it is paid, that it would create a potential conflict of interest, and an individual who is nominated for appointment to mayor would have to recuse themselves, not participate or vote on the matter. I also noted in the opinion the possibility of segmentation, which the FPPC does allow. I pointed out that with the position of both the mayor, since it's one, there's only one mayor, and likewise, if there's a single vacancy for the airport commissioner, that segmentation, in my view, reading the regulations, which are fairly detailed, would not be possible. However, I left open the door to the, what I would call the wholesale reappointment or appointment of airport commissioners in 2009, when all three terms expire in May of 2009, that there may be a possibility of segmenting those because there's a lot of combinations and permutations. In other words, one vote may not affect the other, but where one vote is, has a real potential of affecting the other, you cannot segment. So the determination, my determination is that with one vote, with one position vacant, segmentation is not a possibility. Finally, it is permissible for a council member to leave, who is conflicted out, to leave the dais, go to the podium and speak on the matter as a non-councilperson, must make it very clear you're speaking not as an elected official, but as a, as a essentially ordinary citizen, on your own personal financial interests. It cannot be and should not be an opportunity to try to lobby for appointment other than to speak about your own personal financial interests and how it may or may not be impacted by the potential vote. With that, I'd be pleased, I know it was a little long-winded, and I apologize. So, in conclusion, there's a potential conflict of interest that exists for both appointment to airport commissioner and to mayor. I did offer some remedies, by the way. Airport commission is far more difficult because their payment is set by the airport authority, not by the city of Glendale. However, with regard to the appointment for mayor, my, because the law is by no means ironclad or clear, I do note primarily that I would recommend that you seek formal written advice from the FPPC in writing so that we can pin them down through not just a telephonic conversation, but actual thorough research, vetting by their staff council and also the FPPC. I think the issue is, goes beyond this city. There are other cities, whether general or charter, that have appointed mayors that may receive compensation more than $20 a month over and above their colleagues, in which case they may be conflicted out. So that is my primary recommendation relating to that. Secondarily, certainly, you can equalize the automobile allowance to eliminate any potential problem in the future. That would take a simple ordinance amendment that could be brought forward very quickly. And lastly, of course, the council, the, any member of the council who is nominated for mayor can recuse themselves. Going to be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Did you leave anything out?
No, I think that was a pretty--
I was a bit close up of you the whole time through.
By the way, he wasn't reading anything.
I noticed.
Jeez, I don't know how you do it.
I take the, let me start. And I take the allegations that the actions, my actions on April 16, 2007, were improper and in violation of FPPC regulations very seriously. And I am not, I am not content just to say, oh, we'll let bygones be bygones. I think it's the job of the mayor, whoever the mayor is, to set an example for the city and to obviously act ethically in accordance with these, with these FPPC regulations. It was a wild night, April 16, 2007. You know, I went into it not expecting to be mayor. We had a stalemate for some time, we had a recusal, we had a stalemate on the, not only on the vote of the mayor, but a stalemate on the issue on reconsideration, and it was getting to be quite difficult. By the way, I have it queued up if anyone's interested in seeing the highlights, which includes the Little Red Wagon speeches, Mr. Draymond.
Only if you include my, my speech that night.
Okay, well, we'll hold off on that for now. But clearly, throughout the process, and there is a specific moment when we had, and again, we had five nominations. We had every single council member nominated, plus a fictional soap opera character, Tony Soprano. I think we were all a little bit confused as to what to do, but we did get advice from Mr. Howard to have every councilman state their choice. I would have liked a little better advice at that time, knowing now what we know about the process, and that I think, had you, had you been aware of it, I think it would have created a terrible can of worms, each of us being nominated, one of us wishing to decline nomination, but another insisting that the nomination stay, stay in place. If you're curious, I've got it ready to go.
I was saying--
If we were to apply the law at that point, I think we would all be conflicted out as possible candidates, possible mayors, and we would have had to draw straws and have three of us get up to it. So it was a, it was a rather dicey situation at best. And I think we were all acting on the advice of council. Is there such a defense? If the FPPC comes knocking, that we look towards the city attorney and he said, everyone just vote, state your preference of mayor? And I'm sure that it was not a-- And I'm sure that it was not a, not an error of omission on Mr., it's not that Mr. Howard knew the rule but forgot to tell us. It perhaps wasn't as clear as it could have been prior to this humus letter.
The Humes Advice Letter.
The Humes Advice Letter. So I'm-
Oh, I'd love to see it.
An advice letter?
Yeah, well, no, not the Humes letter. I'd like to see the video. After all, I could use the residuals. Does that conflict me out?
It depends on the value.
Just kidding, Mr. Mayor.
Well, no, I'm not.
No, I thought you were done.
And we got ourselves into that situation. The, the code section, 18705.5, the regulation, was, when was that first passed?
Are you talking about the section itself or the amendment which is critical?
The section.
The section itself? I'd have to go back and check. It certainly predates the amendment, which is, which is critical.
It's my, it's my understanding, it's my belief, that the, that the amendment was not to create a new category, but merely to clarify the intent of the drafters of this, because they had heard that someone had gotten appointed to a position, they said, wait a minute, we mean to appoint also hiring, I mean, it's not clear when we say hire or, or promote, we mean, just so it's crystal clear, to, to appoint as well.
That is correct. And that, and that was based upon what occurred in the city of Oakland when Jane Williams was the appointed city attorney, before they actually changed their charter and had an elected city attorney.
So it's going to be my suggestion that at the next, next opportunity that we have a full council, that we conduct a reaffirmation vote of both the position of mayor and the position of airport authority member. And I don't know if I have any support for that, but-
I'll second that.
I think it's the ethical thing to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Eusefian.
Thank you very much. I do not think that the reaffirmation vote is necessary for one reason. Number one, I think you're going to have an issue because of what I read in the paper. Mr. Drayman intends to bow out and stay, I think that's what I read, didn't I? That you will not be participating in the vote of reaffirmation vote. That's what I read in the paper. Maybe I should listen to Margaret, not, not follow the paper. I think the issue that I am trying to bring up in this, this is not a problem that exists only in Glendale. It has raised major havoc with a lot of other jurisdictions, including in many airport authorities and other type of authorities, which they do get huge amounts of compensation. In some instances, some of the board members get compensated and some of them don't, and that has created even a bigger problem. In a process of the FPPC trying to solve or clarifying a little issue, they have actually created a much, much bigger problem. So in April, what I was trying to do is, in April, we're going to have an issue. And the issue is going to be whether or not we will be able to participate in this. In April, if there are three council members who say they would like to be mayor, what are we going to do?
Of course.
And that's, that's, that was, that's what I'm trying to avoid. I think the remedy that needs to be taken, since this is based on Mr. Howard, this remedy, it's not about a revote. The remedy should be to eliminate the compensation. I hate to say this, I'm guilty of that particular compensation. I'm the one who basically suggested that amount be given after I was mayor in 2004, 2005, because I ended up, when you're a mayor, everybody wants you at their event. So basically, you have no life, you're driving all over the place, and you barely see your wife and his kids, he probably doesn't see his wife or kids. So I thought the least we could do is compensate them for at least the vehicle. Now, at the time, $150, gas wasn't at three bucks a gallon, it was a lot cheaper. But nevertheless, it doesn't go far enough. It was never, never imagined at the time, when we applied this compensation. Our city attorney never warned us, did you?
Yes, sir.
No, because this did not exist. So there was no issues at the time when we did this. We passed it, we put it into a play, Mr. Weaver got a whole year of this money. None of us knew, none of us. Nobody knew about this rule until it was time to appoint Mr. Manukian to the airport commission. At that point, it became apparent that was the problem. That was the first time we all heard about it, including staff. I don't know how Mr. Howard found out, but nevertheless, he did. That's why, after that was done, the next step was, who's going to be the president of the airport? I walked over to Mr. Howard and I said, okay, does this apply to the commission in the airport? Mr. Howard did a research, let me know this, yes, it does. All airport commissions or authorities are, are basically under this jurisdiction. I took his advice and his documents, took it to the airport authority's attorneys. I told them, there's a problem. I let my fellow commissioners to also know, because there were also some of them who were considering to be, as presidents. That information was verified by two, not just one, two airport authority attorneys, that Mr. Howard's issue was accurate, and it also applied to the airport commission, and also because the airport president makes more than the commissioners, that person who's nominated will have to leave the room. Which at that point, since I had interest, when the issue came in front of the authority, I recused myself, I walked out, started making phone calls in the hallway. The airport authority basically made a decision, reappointed the president, which I did not get a unanimous vote, by the way, I just want to let you know. Nevertheless, just barely made it over the top to, to get the job. But I was specifically told I could not vote, I could not lobby, I couldn't do any of that. So I left the room. And that's when I came back and I told the story to Mr. Howard, Mr. Najarian, and Mr. City Manager, that we're going to have a problem in, in April. Because what happens when three members say, I want to be the next mayor? Under this scenario, you knock out three of them. Just imagine, and Mr. Najarian is absolutely right, just imagine, we knew about this in April 16. I had said I wanted to be mayor, that would have automatically knocked me out, so I was out of the room. Mr. Drayman abstained. Mr. Weaver nominated, I mean, Mr. Quintero nominated Mr. Drayman, guess what? He had to leave the room, even he didn't accept it. And so, what would have left? And Mr., and to break the deadlock at that point, Mr. Najarian said, okay, you know what? I will do the job. And let's not forget, I was the one who voted for the reconsideration. The reconsideration was a two-to-two vote. It took my vote to break it to a three-to-two vote. I mean-
Go down in there.
What was it? Yeah. So I, I, I walked the line, and I said, you know what? It's not worth it, we need to have a mayor. We can't go, and let's not forget, Mr. Weaver had a party to go to, and he basically said, I don't care, we can do this next week, I got a party to go to, I got a limo standing outside. And if you want to see that-
That is not true.
It's on tape, everybody.
It's on tape. You want to see that?
I have a limo waiting out there.
No, there was no limo, it was a 600-person party.
It started three hours before.
600-person party. So nevertheless, the bottom line is, we had to have a mayor. And it was the beginning of the year, we have to have a mayor. I don't care who the mayor is, but we have to have a mayor. So I changed my vote, and Mr. Najarian got elected. I do not regret that vote. I'm not saying that I would change my vote if I have to take it again. So I think we need to fix the issue, not to do a revote of this and that.
Okay, well, we've already made a motion a second, but let me just say-
Second.
Right. We can deal with the issue of the monetary compensation later. In the meantime, we need to address the issue of the appointment of the mayor and the airport commissioner. And that's what we'll do in two weeks, and then we have ample time to work with the city attorney and make the decision as to what to pay the mayor if we decide, quite frankly, as I mentioned that night, I totally forgot that the mayor was getting more money.
Same here.
And in terms of, what's the extra pay, $150?
$150, $150 per month.
Even, I mean, I've served as mayor of this city, and while you do have to go to extra functions and so forth, under no circumstances does it rise to $150 extra a month in gas. And you're basically driving around the city of Glendale to the different, but on the merits of the issue, yes or no?
Do I have a Miata?
We can, that's true, I do drive a fuel-efficient vehicle.
Gas was less than $2 at the time.
But at any rate, we can deal with those issues later, and we do have to deal with them, there's no question about it. The FPPC has made that clear. But let's address the reaffirmation of the two appointments, and I absolutely believe that the mayor needs to, you know, have a majority vote in his favor.
A vote with which I would not take place. I would not participate.
To reaffirm, to reaffirm your mayorship. Now, I'm just curious whether we're going to have two, two, what do you call it, dates for your service on the city council when your picture's put up here?
No. Mr. Drayman.
Well, a couple of things. At no time did my fingers leave my hands, and at no time did I leave this chamber during that evening. I declined the nomination, and the nomination, I discovered to my surprise, first thing I learned, was I could decline the nomination, but Mr. Quintero would have to have removed the nomination from the table. He refused to do so, and as a result, I abstained. I did not recuse myself. I abstained because, and it's kind of ironic, because it sort of feels like we're back to that spot, I abstained because I wanted one side or the other of this dais to, as I put it that night, walk through the door and work with, put, you know, sort of old issues aside and, and work together. And Mr. Eusefian is correct, he is the one that, that broke the tie and voted for Mr. Najarian to be mayor. He's the one that walked through that door. But I just want to clarify something. I have finally found a really great use for this BlackBerry, and the paperweight, and something that confounds me all the time. I have the Glendale News Press pulled up on here, the very article that was referred to. Just to set the record straight, I did not say that in the paper, and I know you weren't intentionally misquoting me, Mr. Eusefian, but just to set the record straight. I was asked whether I would, by the reporter, whether or not I would accept a nomination to serve as mayor if that occurred, which I thought was kind of a strange question, but I answered anyway, and it says that Drayman, who set the stalemate in motion during the first appointment vote, said on Monday that he would again decline a second nomination should it come up. Without having read the report, he also said he had not fore, he had not forecast how he would vote. So I will-
Apologies.
That's okay, it's all right. I, if and when this comes up, I will vote, I will not abstain, and I also stick with this. Now I have read the report, but I'm not here to announce in the paper or otherwise how I'm going to vote.
And you heard a detailed explanation from an attorney, how remarkably he can keep everything in his head organized like he does.
Yes, I would also mention, Mr. Mayor, that, that I discovered on a tour with our assistant city manager, Mr. McFaul, one time, and I think I mentioned it here in council, now I understand why our very first city council's resolution number one, the very first resolution they made was to hire a city attorney. And, and I see now why that is.
Mr. Eusefian.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the city attorney, why would, I mean, if you guys want to revote the, all the commissioners on the airport, that's, that's your prerogative, but could you tell us when the commissioners were reappointed, where they were appointed? Was it before or after the law changed?
It was before the change in the law by approximately a month and a half to two months, a little less than two months.
Thank you. So at the time that at least I and Mr. Weaver were appointed-
As well as Mr. Pobolakis.
We did not violate any of the laws.
I wouldn't go that far, I mean, and I wouldn't describe it as a change in the law. We're talking about clarifying their intent, and I think arguments can be made back and forth on that.
Well, I don't think anyone talked about reaffirming all of the airport commissioners.
Because Mr. Weaver is, it's moot for Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I'm talking about reaffirming one airport commissioner.
And serves as a council member.
Yeah, that serves as a council member.
There's been a motion and a second.
Let's clarify the motion.
And in all, in all due respect to my colleagues, I would like to mention to my colleagues that they actually voted for me to be there the first time. Now, I understand you may not like me bringing up this issue, and you take this to be personal. So if you would like to take your personal grievances on me, that's okay. But nevertheless, whether this happens or doesn't happen, you still have a problem, we need to solve the problem. And it really amazes me to the extent we go to hurt each other, but nevertheless, we sit there on television, on other programs, and we say, we try to work together. And this is one of the main reasons, and I hope the people are paying attention, this is part of the reason why this council is dysfunctional. It's because it's not about good government, it's about evening up scores. And so, you want to do that, go ahead. I still think a revote, either for mayor or anything else, it's not appropriate. My suggestion will be is to just amend the salary ordinance and either remove that or raise the rest of them to the same level, and that would solve that problem. We intended to do the same thing in the airport, which is to raise the salary ordinance and also reduce the president's salary ordinance to a point that it levelizes it, because we would have the same problem next year. And everybody else would have the same problem in the state of California. I'm down here with this vote.
For my records, as clarification, I have my notes say that Mayor Najarian made a motion and-
No.
Councilmember Quintero seconded.
No.
And then there was a discussion that it was-
Well, can Mr. Najarian make that motion?
No, not at all.
As long as he's providing over there. But he made the suggestion, and so I agree with him.
And then Councilmember Weaver seconded.
All right, thank you. We'll ask for a revote on both positions.
All right.
Since both positions are currently served by elected officials, obviously, the mayor and-
One other, I did make a, a recommendation in the staff report that I seek a formal written opinion from the FPPC. I've not heard that any council member would like me to do that, and so unless I receive direction to do that, I won't, although I strongly recommend it.
I would say yes, sure.
Can we roll that into the same motion?
I would appreciate that.
And I move that we also have the FPPC issue.
Amending your motion.
Amending that motion.
I'll buy that.
And I just want to address Mr. Eusefian's issues. And it's easy to cry foul and say that it's all personal now, but in the same spirit that you brought this up, and you made it clear, it wasn't about Aura, and this isn't about you. This is about doing what I feel personally is right, whether- whether there was an airport involved or no airport, whether we had the Port of Long Beach Commission to deal with. It was clearly brought up that there is, that there was a violation of the FPPC regulations at the appointment process when I became mayor. And I need to clear that. And it was not clear until just recently, until this opinion came out as to where exactly the city attorney was gonna place his opinion as to the mayor's position. It's only fair that, as I read the rule, that the modification, which came a month after, two months after your election to the airport commission, that it wasn't creating a new regulation. It was clarifying their initial regulation. And I think that if you look at the history as to what triggered them to include the words "to appoint", it's clear that that was their intent all along. We're talking about ethics, we're talking about doing what's right, and we talk about transparency, we talk about accountability. Some of us do, some more than others. And I think that this is what initiated my efforts here on this subject.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yusefin.
As you were speaking, I kept looking at the city attorney. My understanding is, the way the FPPC operates, it's on a going-ahead basis. They do not go back and say, you violated something 20 years ago or two years ago, number one. Number two, I don't think the city attorney agrees with your notion that this was a clarification. It may have been, we don't have a written issue on that. But it doesn't matter what I have to say. You guys want to get even, go for it. That's okay.
Take a look.
That's okay, go for it. And the only question will be to the city attorney. When the airport issue comes up, since I'm on the chopping block, I'm assuming I will not be able to vote on this, correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's correct because of the potential personal financial--
And on the same token, since we're going back to a time before that, would that also cause Mr. Quintero and Mr. Weaver to recuse themselves since they have also asked to be on that airport in the past?
That's an interesting question. Depends on how we frame this. If it's just a reaffirmation vote, I can't presume that they would be the ones that would be nominated or interested in appointment to the airport authority at this time. A subsequent vote it may be.
But it's going back. We're going back, trying to fix something that-- They were not a party to it originally, and now they're gonna be party to it.
My view is that you folks may be going back. I don't believe under FPPC regulations that that is required. That, as I think the phrase that I've used--
That's all I want to know.
--in the past is that this is what I would call an internal homegrown remedy.
Okay.
That you folks want to--
So this is not FPPC requirements?
In my view, in my view, it is not. The FPPC does not issue opinions on a, as you pointed out, and as I think I pointed out earlier, on a retrospective basis. However, if someone filed a complaint with the FPPC, they would investigate it and determine if there was a violation that occurred, whenever it's alleged that it occurred, and they would take appropriate steps. One of the steps, and this is one thing I did leave out in my maybe too lengthy or too wordy report, and that's the issue of penalties. The FPPC does not remove people from office, does not require revotes. They have the power to impose administrative penalties. Civil court action can result in the unwinding of a vote under limited circumstances. Likewise, criminal penalties can result in forfeiture of office.
Thank you. I just want to say, I don't want an asterisk by my name, Mr. Howard, when they say, when they talk about who the mayors were. Mr. Milano, if you can keep it brief, because I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Najarian, my name is Herbert Milano. Mr. Najarian, I know that as mayor, you spend a considerable amount of time that most people don't even realize, and any previous mayor has spent, and pretty much have given up their jobs and their personal income with regard to serving the city. And I know, Mr. Weaver, as being retired, he spends a tremendous amount of time, and so does Mr. Quintero. There is no adequate compensation for the amount of time that you receive. You know, asking that everyone receive $150 additionally, whether it's for automobile expenses or whatever, doesn't go even far enough in covering all of the expenses that you personally have had by skipping work, not attending to your business, and so on, that the city basically has required of you for you to do an adequate job. If the interpretation of Mr. Yusefin is correct, I think it's much easier, much less expensive for all of you to just simply increase your compensation for automobile expenses for $150 and be done with it. That way, nothing changes for you, Mr. Najarian. We appreciate the work that you've done.
Mr. Milano, going forward, that might solve it. But for the first six months, there's the asterisk.
Yes.
And to me, that's important.
Can you pay it back?
And I'm paying it back as well. But even paying it back doesn't cure the problem. That's merely mitigation. When they look at what the penalties are gonna be, they're gonna say, what did the subject do? What steps did he take to mitigate the effect of his misstep, his misvote?
But how's voting going to change it? They'll still say, oh, yeah.
It's gonna cut it off. It's gonna cut it off from the point of the new vote. It's gonna be, I'll have five months of a clear conscience.
Point of order, or whatever. Call for the question.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Drayman.
Just a clarification. We are voting on-- I'd like to hear it read back, please.
As I understand the motion, it is for a reaffirmation vote of the vote taken in April for mayor and a reaffirmation of the appointment of Mr. Yusefin to the airport commission, as well as directing the city attorney's office to seek a formal written advice letter from the FPPC on the issue of a mayoral appointment and the treatment of the auto allowance in connection with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, can I seek direction on timing? I would anticipate the agenda of November 6th if this motion passes. I will tell you, you have a very full agenda, including planning commission recommendations on single-family residential hillside development standards and council direction on the question of privacy compatibility standards. We can place it on here, we'll work our way through it, but that's a very full agenda.
Well, I think we need to, and especially like Mr. Najarian says. I mean, this was thrown out, it's been out there for a while, so let's do what we need to do. So I don't have a problem with it. And the earlier on the agenda we do it, the better.
Then we might include in the motion that it comes back on the agenda November 6th.
Yeah. With that--
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver. Yusefin. Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion also. I'd like to make a motion that the staff come back with an amendment to the benefit ordinance to either reduce the benefit ordinance to the mayor or, as Mr. Milano suggests, to change the benefit ordinance to $50 additional to all council members and reduce the mayor from $150 to $50.
Well, I'd like to have another option. I'll second that motion, but I'd like to have another option rather than $150 or $50. So let the staff come up with different financial options or--
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if it's your direction, we could bring you back an ordinance that would leave the numbers blank, and you can, we'll tell you what the current is, which you already know. And then you can decide where you'd want to place it, the intent to be to equalize the auto allowance moment.
But I'll second the motion.
Wow, I've only been here six months, and I'm already getting my first raise, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe, I don't know. I'm not saying I'll vote for it.
You're lucky.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Roll call on the--
That's it.
Sorry. The motion by Mr. Yusefin giving direction to staff to return with options for an ordinance which would remedy the financial disparity.
We'll bring you back, actually, an ordinance, as Mr. Starburg notes. We'll bring you back an ordinance with blanks, and you can either leave it the same or fill it in.
And I would anticipate that in the same meeting November 6th.
You can anticipate it, but I have to tell you, I'm out of town next week. I'm gonna be hustling to just draft this one thing up.
So that doesn't--
I don't think it has to be November 6th.
Okay.
Just double-check after that.
The only thing--
I'd like to have it not on the 6th. Can you do it the following week?
I would be working of the week of the 6th to prepare it for the 13th. It's possible, there's no urgency, because you want to have it done before April. And I don't mean to extend it out that far, but maybe a week or two into November.
It really doesn't have a bearing on the matter that'll be on the 6th. It really only affects the upcoming election.
The only problem is that we get tied up in so many different things that things just kind of fall off the wagon. And so, maybe sometime in November.
We'll have it back before the end of the calendar year.
Well, and I was gonna suggest, if, let me see if I can push it to begin it for the 6th. If I can, it's, if I can, I'll get it, if I, I'll work my hardest to do it.
Frankly, Scott, with the length of the agenda, we're better off not having it wrapped up with the other issue.
I'll guarantee that we'll have it though before the end of November.
Okay.
That's fine.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefin.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Is there any new business?
Yes. I'd like to move that the city attorney be hereby is authorized to initiate legal action against Champion Broadband California LLC, Champion and Altrio Communications Inc., Altrio, based upon Champion and Altrio failing to pay required franchise fees and polichattnet fees pursuant to a private line franchise agreement granted by the council. City attorney is further authorized to amend the city's retainer agreement with the law firm of Witten and Tucker LLP, William Art Corina, to assist the city attorney in representing the interests of the city in connection with said litigation. Retainer agreement amendment shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a P cap for the assistance in handling the matter. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefin.
No.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Who we adjourn?
We adjourn.